To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to suggest a change of order of the agenda. I'd like to suggest that we get rid of the consent agenda because a number of board members have questions on a number of items.
Okay.
I would like to suggest that item three and five become item 11 and 12 so that the board may act on things that the public is here for, and you have to be with us anyway.
You may choose not to act on the canon at all because Joe hasn't vetted the contract yet.
Well, we still can talk about it.
But that's up to you.
Oh Sally, I want the bill to be removed.
You want two items removed?
Both of them.
The discussion of the contract?
Yep.
And the proposal?
And the number five canon, yeah.
You don't want to have any conversation at all about it?
Um, which one of us put it on the agenda? Which member of the board?
I don't think any member present put it.
Did the mayor put it on?
The mayor asked me to get the contract for the SharePoint person. They asked me to.
So, well, so when he's here, I guess, if he ever decides to show back up, we'll discuss it then.
Does the rest of the board concur?
Yeah.
Okay, and item five, I believe is something Katie asked for?
Actually, it's just that the O C E printed, the O C E copier down in the Treasurer's office, at least is coming to an end on May thirty first.
At least we're in the long, not noon.
Okay, and who asked to put it on the agenda?
Nancy and Pete.
It has to be dealt with one way or the other. If you prefer not to deal with it tonight, that's up to you. But one way or the other, at least it's ending.
Okay, that's.
We might want to get the comments from the village attorney before considering.
I agree. My issue is that item's going to be put on the agenda by members of the board. That's it.
But the mayor put this on, right?
We did. The copy company came to us and said, your lease is expiring. Here's what we can offer you as a choice. I went to Nancy and said, this is what they're offering us. She said, it's a good choice. I asked the mayor, can we put it on? Because it has to be dealt with, we can't.
Okay, well.
Well, why don't we talk about five at the end? Three is off.
All right, because Al is about to ask a question anyway, so I don't want to have a conversation about it.
Okay. Um, I'd like to add to the agenda the building inspector recommendation from the planner. We will need a short executive session in case what, um, board members have questions. Um, I'd like to add B three, and I'd like to add the board procedures. Okay.
Oh, that sounds good to me. I said that sounds good to me.
Okay, any, any other additions to the agenda? Oh, and there was a request for an executive session at the end on the employment history of a particular individual.
Oh, um, I'd like to add the Memorial Day Parade.
Sure.
Um, and Jesse Putnam has requested that her item be removed.
Oh.
They're going to do it on campus.
That's, oh, it was a college event. I wasn't sure whether it was a college or a high school event.
What honor is the department that was in there?
The old days, the sororities had the lantern.
Oh, okay. So that one goes off altogether?
Altogether, they're going to do it on the campus.
Any other changes, Katie?
Because I have issues with it.
Oh.
There's a current fire ban in New York State, and I don't think it's appropriate considering the lack of rain until today for us to be like.
My garden's saying.
Everything exploded, and it looks awesome today, but, uh.
Okay. Anything else? Me, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, public comment announcements, and if the board wouldn't mind, I'd like to take a moment to welcome our new trustees who were elected yesterday. Trustee Tom Rocco will be joining us in June, and Rebecca Rosler, who is not feeling well. She's having an allergy attack, I guess, and I'd like to welcome both of them and congratulate them. And at the same time, while I'm very happy you're joining us, we are going to miss you, Brian, and we are going to miss you, Stuart.
I, I will concur with all of that, and I'm actually really excited because, and I said this to Sally earlier, uh, I think this is the first time in New Pauls' history that we will have a female majority on the board, which is really cool. No offense, guys.
Can I add to that? I wanted to thank everyone who played their part and ran for the public office. It's an easy thing to do, and the fact that you put yourself out there shows that you have a commitment and you care about the community, and that's really great. And I'll thank everyone who participated in the election process, and all the voters who came out, and everyone who worked on the election, and Katie for putting it together, and all the pollsters and poll watchers, and everyone who made yesterday such a success. And it's, there's a lot of energy going on in the village, and it's a beautiful thing to see, and yay democracy, and all that.
Anybody else have any announcements?
I would like to publicly thank the clerk for what I understand was a flawless election, and I've heard lots of good comments from our election inspector about what a fabulous job you did, and so thank you from the board for a job well done.
Just an update on where we are in the fire contract. You're probably aware that the town board, the village board, and the fire company itself get together to put that contract together each year, and the last several years it's been very late, and we're hopeful that it's going to be on time. This board has already approved it. The town board has it on its agenda for tomorrow. Monday night, two representatives from this board, Ariana and me, and the fire company, and the two representatives from the town, hopefully will be able to be there, Jeff Logan and Kevin Berry, and hopefully we can work out any extra details so that with any luck, we'll be able to approve that by the end of the month. So when we come to start the contract here on June one, we'll actually have a contract in place. That's certainly our goal, and that's where we are at the moment.
Anything else from the board?
And Rafflin? Can I comment?
Yes, dear.
Okay. Um, I would like to ask the board if they would be able to bring something up for discussion tonight, and what it has to do with is Central Hudson, oh, Central Hudson is possibly being bought out by a multinational corporation called Fortis from Canada, and it was under the radar, but now more and more people know about it. So more individuals have put the word out that they're not interested, but also I have a list of at least a dozen municipalities, including the town and Fortis in New Falls, who have passed a resolution asking the Public Service Commission to deny this merger. And what I'd like to ask you tonight is that, um, this is like really, everybody uses David and Elias, but this is a David and Elias. And the, um, and the David here are the municipalities from the county level to the village level, the municipalities who have asked the P, uh, Public Service Commission to deny the merger. So, um, but we need to be more united. So we have a Public Service Commission lawyer who has started to take the case for us, and we have had a lot of victories. And the town last week voted to join the consortium, and that's what I'd like to ask you tonight, is if we can join the consortium also, because, um, it's the only way we're going to stop this is if the people who don't want it are really organized, you know, in a good way. So, um, basically, that's what I'd like to ask if, um, if we could discuss that tonight. And then Hector is coming by in a little while if we are going to discuss it, and the two of us could make you a very brief presentation about the consortium and what's involved, you know, the financial part and everything related to that.
You do know that the administrative law judge has recommended against the merger?
Absolutely, yes, thank you, Sally. And, and what's happened is that, um, I didn't read it, but it came out today, that the, um, the Central Hudson and Fortis, uh, what's it called when you refuted everything? So I haven't seen it yet, but they are not giving up. But you're right, that is really on our side, that the administrative law judges have said that they don't think this is for the benefit of the ratepayers and the citizens of the Hudson Valley, but that doesn't mean it's a done deal, and they are fighting. And I'll just show you one thing, which is, um, every day for the last week and a half, they have had this in the three major papers, the Times Herald Record, um, the Freeman, and the Poughkeepsie Journal, and they're giving a lot of ad revenue to our local papers, which is good, but for the last ten or twelve days, they've had a full page ad in the paper, and now they've started to take out commercials on the radio in Orange County. So they are not giving up. They are not giving up. And the stat, well, but what it says here is, this is all being paid for by the shareholders of Central Hudson Energy Group. So the shareholders have a lot of money, and that's what they're using it for, is to really fight having it go through and not be denied, so.
It is up to the board whether you want to add this or not.
Oh, I, I would add it.
You'll add it?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to add it? Because we've already adopted the agenda, so.
I'll make a motion to add the, add this to the agenda.
I'll second it for discussion. I mean, my, my only hesitancy about having a discussion on it tonight is we really don't have much in the way of, like, facts. I haven't really followed this all that much. I mean, you know, we, we passed the resolution two weeks ago.
To keep the hearings open.
Right.
To ask for more information. That we have done.
Yeah, okay.
So I mean, it might be okay if, you know, Hector shows up and, well, and Hector just put on like a quick presentation for us, like something very brief and informative, and then maybe at our next meeting or something like that, we could choose to discuss it further.
I'm totally open to that. I don't think we necessarily have to take actions.
Right, yeah.
But we do have to, Hector comes.
And, and, yeah, and if the two of them want to make a recommendation to us. I mean, I, I do, I have been following this, um, so I do, I feel like I am, you know, aware enough of what's going on today.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, but I already know what Roslin's going to ask us, and I'm in favor of it, but, uh, but I'm, I'm okay to whatever you guys want to do.
Okay. So we agreed to add it, and one Hector or Roslin?
Exactly.
Does anyone, Stuart?
Uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to, but I agree with you. I don't think we should pass the resolution tonight without having data to review ahead of time. Perhaps we're all going to go in favor of that ultimately, but I think we need to have the facts, just like we had to have them on fracking and so forth, so that we can make an informed decision.
We'll listen to the presentation and take action.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
We're good to go. Um, you might have to wait till we're done with everybody else.
I have nowhere else to go and nothing to do.
Any other public comments?
How nice.
Erin?
I guess, I have two questions. I couldn't hear all the changes. What was taken off the agenda?
Oh.
Three, four, five.
Five we put to the bottom.
Oh, at five, five is at the end.
Five to the end.
Right. Three and four.
Three we removed for the person who requested it be put on.
And we added?
Which were you here for?
We added four items.
B three? It was hard to hear because it was going right.
We added B three. We added, um, the procedures, board procedures. We added Memorial Day Parade. We added building inspector. Just long overdue.
Okay. Can you say what was three about? Why was it taken off? I'm not sure, is it contract?
It's, uh, something regarding, uh, program on our server, and, uh, someone who's going to come in and give us a presentation regarding it.
Okay. And my second question is, do you all know why the mayor is not here?
People should ask him if you can find him.
No idea.
We just got a note saying that he would not be in attendance.
I didn't get a note.
Okay.
Are we ready to begin? Don?
I also want to congratulate Tom Rocco, Rebecca Rosler, um, John McCullen, Roger Skirda. I spent today feeling pretty happy. Actually, I said to people, you know, if I win, I win, but if I lose, I win, and I, I have my family and my Wednesdays, and that's okay with me, because it really is.
That's totally understandable.
But I'd like to, I'd like to speak from the heart a little bit about my observations and my, my emotions regarding the last village board meeting where I was in attendance, and the joint town board and village board meeting that I watched on TV. And I, I, I'm speaking with tremendous affinity and, 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 and good feelings for the village of New Falls and the people behind the table. And some of you are, are my oldest and deepest friends, so I, I, that's, that's, that's the place from which I, I approach this. And my, my feeling and my assessment in looking at the last village meeting and the joint meeting was watching a board that had lost its moral compass, watching a board that had lost, lost its way. The discussions with regard to the institution of mayor, it, it, it had the appearance from the audience of elected officials using the board table of policy to, to enact personal disputes for personal reasons. And I'm, I, I, I've seen enough boards, and, and many of you have seen enough boards to know that the best decision making is made with discussion of important items during public hearings, and involvement of the public, or at least notice to the public of major policy changes. And, and that didn't happen, and I, I just make that observation that it, it, it made me sad. You know, I've heard from this table, public discussion, that at times you wish as a board you did better in your personal relations, and I know that's been a, something you've worked at. But what I saw at the last village meeting was, to my perception, you know, personal, personal conflicts rise to the level of policy, and that, that's, you know, that, it, it, that's where I, I, it, it seemed to be spirited, and that's where I, I say that I, I felt like the board has lost its moral compass. It was not pleasant to watch. It, it, it was, it was really uncomfortable. And segueing to the, the joint town board meeting. I, um, it's, it's unfortunate for everyone who wants this consolidation issue to be resolved, that there may be a question, that maybe it can come to a vote, and can come to a resolution, resolution November. I think for the good of everybody and everything, we should have, we should have a vote and, and have this happen or not happen, but I think it's, it's taking too much time, energy, and now, now money from the, from the village of the town. What I saw was a consistent effort, I mean, a driving effort by members of the village board to figure out strategies to disempower the voters in the village of New Falls, the annexation. And when, when the issue was, well, the village board would still need to vote, to agree for a vote for annexation, the discussion was, well, how can we disempower the village board? And this came from members of the village board. And, and, um, it's, to, to try to deny people their votes, or boards of their votes, is not good policy, it's not good practice, it doesn't honor the Constitution, it doesn't honor the people who put you there as your representatives. And I, I, as a friend, honestly, I, 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 I wanted to work with you, and I still will and do want to work with you together, but I, 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 you know, friends sometimes tell other friends hard things, and, and that's, that's the spirit in which I speak tonight. I, I'm, I'm concerned. It, it, it does not appear that decisions are being made in the way that happened best by elected boards, and, um, I felt compelled to, uh, to speak from the heart.
Thank you, Don. Does any board member want to comment? I will comment on behalf of the board, and maybe other people will jump in. As to the first statement, the budget is a public document. It is the mayor's document to the board. The board does not begin to discuss the document until it has been submitted to the board. That occurred this year on its final day, March twentieth, and no discussion was invited by the board, um, on the mayor's part to discuss his desires or wishes. That takes care of, I think, at least my feelings on the first part of your statement. The second part, I'm really having trouble with, because you certainly have, over the last three months, expressed comments to the joint boards that you are less than desirable to have the question presented to the public on the issue of consolidation. So I may have misunderstood your prior comments, but, and I will apologize if I did, but I think my understanding of what you have said in the past and what you're saying this evening are perhaps diametrically opposed. So, do you wish to say anything?
At the end of the last meeting, we had our attorney go and bring forth propositions to our state senator and our state assemblyman in order to create a special section of the code where we could have a proterm in this government. Annexation was taken off as an option because people wouldn't be able to get to vote then. We want everyone to have the vote. I think that is the concern of every single member of this board, so when you come out and say things like that, it's, it's hard to hear. Um, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe we just missed that part, um, but I think I can speak for everyone here that everyone wants to see the vote happen, and, um.
Everybody has the right to.
Everyone has the right to vote, yes. And regarding the first part, it just, I mean, um, I guess I could see how, maybe you could perceive it the way you did, um, but, but once again, there's four of us here, and this isn't the first meeting that's happened. We, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, you can say it's personal, but it's very professional, I think.
I don't know what the ground rules is. I was just making a comment, so I was going to be done.
Yeah.
When you come back and you can vote it, then that's, that's it?
If you want.
Is that what the power is up?
No, I think we're ready to go. Is there anybody else who has public comment for the board? Okay, I'm going to officially open the meeting, and I would like the minutes to know that the mayor informed us by email that he would not be here this evening, and he gave no reason.
I didn't get the email. I didn't get the email.
You didn't get the email. I got the email.
Well, I know you guys did.
Okay. I would like a motion on bills and claims to approve pending the mayor's signature. Second?
I'll second, uh, for discussion. Did the last week's get signed by him?
Yes, they did. They did. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, we have had on our agenda for a while, the request by the chamber for their marathon, and we couldn't act on it until we ascertained whether it had received the approval of the police, and the clerk has been kind enough to investigate that for us, and would you like to tell the board what you found out?
Earlier this evening, I spoke to Chief Snyder, who confirms that he is approving the run. I sent him an email after our conversation to confirm that that's exactly what he said, and he said that as, as quickly as possible, he would respond to my email, and I copied each of you, I have them with Chief Snyder, um, so that you would have the confidence that if you would like to approve it conditionally, certainly you'll see the response from him. If he doesn't respond, if he doesn't copy, everyone will be happy to copy it all.
I mean, I trust that he spoke with him, and he is aware of this, so, um, I would make a motion to approve the amount.
Taking out the half marathon on June sixteenth.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I want to know if Mr. Smith is running.
Put him on the spot, why don't you?
I'm walking the circuit.
I wouldn't be able to run it.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Get your running shorts on.
Did you, did you have anything that you wanted to say? I, I'm assuming that's why you're here, although you're welcome to come over.
He was just here to make sure we did it.
Looking forward to it. That's about it.
Cool.
Okay. All right. I see that our illustrious county legislator has arrived.
Where?
Remind me to cancel my subscription. Remind me of that later.
Put you in, and should we do Rafflin?
Yeah, yeah.
You want to do it right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We were waiting for your arrival.
Wow. Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I, I honestly do appreciate that. I unfortunately was up in the county.
I brought you copies of these. What they are is, they have colorful paperclips. Here we go. Okay, this is, um, some information about forming a consortium, a little flyer, and then this is, um, a sample. So, okay, that's for you, the records, and I want for you, and you.
Do we each have a different colored paperclip?
That was actually my next question, by the way.
It's a Roslin. A secret single. Blue.
Give it to me. I'll, I'll, I'll give you a pink one.
And I even have one for the new.
Erin, did you get one?
I got one, yeah.
You know, I can't win right now, it's fine.
Yes, you can.
She wants pink, you don't want blue. What color do you have?
Hector, what we agreed to do is to hear you and Roslin, but we're not going to make any decision tonight, because this is new, a new topic, and we put it on the agenda for a decision.
Congrats to you. Okay, for, for next week, though?
Next week?
Okay. Okay, no, 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 I mean, a week's time is tally, that's, that's, of course. Although I have to remind, you know, the, the town made a decision the same night, by the way.
They're very impetuous.
I failed to come.
I feel like your pressure doesn't work.
That's all right. I just wanted to see what would happen.
We don't just do it when we need to.
Last one to begin.
So, uh, no, I mean, look, I, I, I'm actually very, very appreciative you guys actually are here to hear us out, and that, you know, you guys have supported, um, the efforts of, you know, of taking a hard look at this merger. Um, this is really important for all of us in our community, um, and really just throughout the entire region, because it, we are the ratepayers at the end of the day, and that, that includes so many different people of different economic status, and, and, and it's, it's the one thing that we share. We share a common utility, and a utility that is a public monopoly. It's a publicly granted monopoly that is regulated by the Public Service Commission. So this really is, in, in many ways, our, our infrastructure, our network, and, um, right now, there is a Canadian company that may be less than ideal, I guess, a fit for our region. They, I, I don't want to get into this, because I think you guys have already heard this before, but, um, you know, it, it's, we're now at the next stage of going from initial sort of concern and opposition, really now to the real nuts and bolts of what will actually happen. Now, the Public Service Commission did recently, you guys may have read in various media, they, uh, they, they came out with a publicly recommended decision, and one that said that the deal, and I'm paraphrasing, I'm also not legal counsel, as Stuart, I'm sure, would remind me, but, uh, um, the deal as it's currently constructed can be better, and I think that that was really in response to both the public as well as other notable people, including Senator Schumer, who, uh, came out in opposition at this time based off of what the deal currently constitutes, and also because there's a series of questions that he's asked about their, you know, about Fortis's readiness, um, if they were to basically take over, are they prepared to be able to deal with the, the, you know, Hurricane Irene or the Hurricane Sandies that we, that we end up getting, um, in this area? Um, you know, are, are they going to be putting in, um, rate increases going into the future? Because they've, they've offered this, of course, this, this one year that they won't do a rate increase, but that's sort of a, that, that, it's sort of disingenuous, because the P S C takes about eleven months to approve a rate increase in the first place. to approve a rate increase in the first place. So, meaning if they bought, if they bought Central Hudson tomorrow, they'd be putting in for a rate increase the next day and it would take about a year for that rate increase to actually go through. So, it's not a real, a real offer. So, this is why we've actually engaged Dan Duffy, um, to go and, and represent us and also to be sort of the watchdog along with the great people like Rosalyn and all the other community volunteers who have really gotten involved in this issue. Um, and so, this is why we're here in front of the village of Newpaltz. Because we are getting municipalities invested in this process, getting skin in the game. Rosendale and the town of Newpaltz have already approved fifteen hundred dollars towards this consortium. Um, I believe Woodstock is gonna be, uh, is it this week or next week?
Um, we're all dispersed going to different meetings, so I don't know who's where. I don't know. But, but that's definitely on the agenda for Woodstock and under municipalities.
Yes, exactly.
Where do you see the administrative law judge's ruling that came out at the end of last week fitting into this process?
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's, it just opens that door of really what are we getting as a community from this merger? Mo- most of times when, when, when utilities merge, at least the way it's been pretty much, you know, before, you know, probably before the two thousand, you know, when, when, when utilities would merge, they were both local entities or, or near local entities. You know, they were actually able to gain efficiencies because you've now got one utility next to another that are now merging. They were able to kind of, you know, save on equipment and save on, save on staff and then be able to actually deliver efficiencies to the consumers. Um, that, that's what you saw with Con Ed and O N R because they're in the kind of, you know, the, the same region. Um, and so, that's, that's something that in the way that utilities used to merge was pretty accepted. And that's why the PSC would kind of look at the deal and say, yes, okay, you know, it's, it, it looks like a good deal. Um, the unions would normally sign off on it because they would basically be neighboring unions. They would just basically merge locals and it was, it was pretty much administrative. Um, they might hold out for a better deal, but it was generally speaking, the, the unions, the workers would be on board with most of these mergers. Actually, I'm sorry, all of these mergers, except for this one, by the way. And that's a unique thing that you're seeing with this merger right now. Is that you're seeing I B E W Local Three Twenty, which represents Central Hudson, uh, in opposition, uh, to the merger. Because Fortis has a history of, of outsourcing. And outsourcing just means really the loss of local jobs. So, this becomes not just a, not just a that the, the Canadian company has a bad environmental record, not just because they don't invest in renewables and they, they actually have a tendency towards natural gas and have sort of, uh, how should we say this? They have not, they have not overtly said that they are interested in fracking, but it's something that has sort of come out through the, through the, uh, investigations that, um, individuals have done. But it comes down to, we, we may be losing from an economic development, community development standpoint, where you've got folks being laid off and, you know, now you're losing those salaries in your communities and in your region. So, now you're basically talking about, you know, potentially some, some real loss here for all of us. So, again, this is why we, we, we've hired Dan. He's an expert in the utilities, uh, industry. He actually worked for utility for years. Um, I think your, I think his resume or his curriculum may have been submitted, I think, at some point to you guys. So, you guys have a, a sense of who he is.
We don't have it.
Oh, you don't? I'm sorry, I thought that was...
That was that, yep. Uh, but, well, we'll, we'll make sure of that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and if you don't, we'll, we'll get it to you.
That was one of the things that you showed me that was just worth it.
Yeah.
From Hector's email this morning.
Yeah, the scope of representation.
Yeah, so...
I, I just have a question.
Sure.
This, this little yellow flyer, which I think is, um, it, it's, it's effective. But my only question is, does Central Hudson have more of a green energy plan? I, I don't, I don't, I'm against this merger to be...
Yeah, no, no, no.
That is our premise, but I'm just wondering in terms of this flyer specifically because it says, you know, this really cool green looking infrastructure.
And, and if, you know, and, and I also want Rosalyn to, to also, uh, jump in as well. But, um, I'm not gonna go and tell you that, oh, you know, you know, i- if this merger doesn't go through, that Central Hudson's gonna, you know, be even more green than they've been. But, but their past history has been to be invested in, in solar and in renewables. I mean, that, that is their past history. So, that, that's something, based off of past history, that, that, that's something that they have been invested in.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's really, I mean, Fortis has actually said, um, at various points that they are not interested in renewables. Uh, according to their corporate, in terms of, in terms of their corporate statement.
I just wasn't sure if there was more of a plan in place with Central Hudson or what they're doing currently.
Well, because, well, because they, they were really setting themselves, I mean, I, I, I can't say this, uh, but they are, they, they clearly deferred certain, uh, investments that they probably would have made in the grid or that they normally would have made in the grid over, over, to the tune of six hundred and sixty million dollars.
Right.
Um, now, that also becomes oddly enough, a perfect reason for a rate increase if Fortis were to buy this company, to buy Central Hudson. They then have a, like a, an ironclad, perfectly valid reason to request a rate increase to basically make those investments that Central Hudson probably should have been, been making, uh, over time.
I mean, would make if this doesn't go through.
Or, you know, or, uh...
You can't, you can't say that.
I, well, well, no, and, and it, and it is honestly because we, because we don't know. I mean, we don't know, you know, should this merger not go through? Would another company like, you know, ideally, and again, not this would happen, but ideally, Con Edison or someone like that could step into the, into the fray?
That would be awful.
Possibly. No, it depends.
Um, I think though, I mean, I wasn't, um, I think, at this point, I really think that we're not looking so much as to this is a bad deal. It is a bad deal and, and we have lots of things to show that. It's to get everybody together on the same page with the Public Service Commission lawyer. And I'll make sure you all see his bio if, if that wasn't sent to you, I'll send it to you.
I think, I think it's...
You do have it, okay.
No.
I think you sent...
Yeah, and, um, when, I, I wasn't here when he came on board, but he's really shaped it unbelievably. And we've gotten lots of, um, you know, lots of other municipalities, even at the county level, to join. So, I think it's a real David versus Goliath. And if we don't have him, you know, structuring all the things that are happening, we're not gonna get anywhere because, um, they have so much money. Um, and we, so at least our lawyer is doing things correctly and we're, you know, being very efficient in terms of how he responds to things.
Question's twofold. One, do you have any parameters of money expected from the village of Newpaltz? Should we go in on this?
Uh, yes, and it's, it's, it's an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. So, it may be less.
From this village?
Yes.
Times all the other towns and...
Yeah, we're, we're all...
That's what the town...
Yeah.
The second question is, how much has Ulster County committed to this?
Well, we, we are, we are currently, we are currently debating that as a matter of fact, so that is...
Good question, Sally.
And, and, and I can, and if I can add to it, Sally, if you don't mind, it, it, it would be an amount north of fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, you're at least in...
Well, we're...
We hope.
We're, that's what we're debating.
So, as we said, I mean, does the board have any questions?
Well, it seems that they're go- that they're going to, um, decide on, be based on your population.
Well...
I mean, how many people you have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I... Yeah, I mean, a- a- and also, I believe also if, for example, um, because Dan is, I think, actually kind of set, um, a certain base amount, meaning if, if money were to come in from other sources, um, money might end up being rebated back to the municipalities based off of population size as well. So, meaning if, if we're successful in bringing some other players into this, into this consortium, um, you know, it, it may be less than that fifteen hundred and it, you know, maybe it's rebated back.
And Rosalyn, do you know, and I hate to put you on the spot, do you know whether the town, when it endorsed this, paid it out at the A Fund or the B Fund?
Uh, B Fund.
B Fund.
Okay.
That was, that was done deliberately, yes.
We were sitting there.
Important for us to know.
Yep, yep.
Um, who, um, the one thing I want to say about the consortium is that it says municipal consortium. Well, it's not just municipal now. Um, we're gonna see if we get money from, um, environmental groups like, um, Sierra Club has signed on to agree with us. We don't know, but they may be willing to make a donation. Um, and, um, so the environmental groups, the unions, so we're trying to not have it just being municipal.
Some of the colleges and universities and big institutional...
Absolutely. Whoever, whoever we can...
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we...
Student Foundation wants to, uh...
I don't wanna put them in a bad spot as the P, as the PSC is a, is a state, you know, organization that you don't wanna have, you don't wanna have two state organizations sort of, you know.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, a couple more. Um, there's, doesn't seem to be anything in the retainer that says that on a certain amount of notice that the contract could be canceled by either of the parties.
Um, I'm actually not gonna speak to that because I, yeah, but, but, we'll, we'll find out.
And, and if you have all these municipalities, is this a statewide deal or is wherever Central Hudson is?
Yeah, I mean, it's a regional, yeah, yeah, I know, it's, it's a regional, yeah.
All right.
It, it's, it's, it's...
So, I mean, who, who gives the lawyers instructions and sees what's doing and picks copies of the bills and all that? Who, who monitors this for all these municipalities just out in...
Well, I mean, right, well, no, no, no. Uh, 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 at the moment, um, and again, I, I don't wanna speak to all of this, but I know Citizens for Local Power has been sort of the organizing entity for this. So, that is sort of like where, and, and that's been the group that Rosalyn is a member of, that, uh, that the...
Is this just a volunteer association of some kind?
Yes, it's a group, um, it's, it's a group of women from Rosendale and they all, and some of them like, you know, manager green. And, um, there's other ones that have high positions and like somebody from Ford College who's part of one of their big environmental movements, Susan Gillespie. And, um, so we have, so they're very responsible and we're, we're working on this. It's a work in progress, you know, I think...
But you will develop a budget, you will...
Well, yeah, they mean, and, and that budget, I mean, again, you know, unfortunately, Dan, Dan is actually busy working on, on some of the legal documents that actually are, are being involved in this.
Yeah.
But, um, but yeah, no, we, there, there, there is a budget. There is a budget, I believe, right now of twenty-five thousand dollars base. And then, you know, that's just where, you know, we, we're, we're, we're then actually pursuing some additional support from other avenues that may be pro bono lawyers, so, in addition.
When you say fifteen hundred dollars, is that the estimate of to get all the work done from beginning and to this contract? That's all of the villages of Newpaltz and hatch pay and...
Yes, yeah. That, 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 that is an amount, that is an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Period.
And that covers all of this representation.
Yep.
Because the description of the representation is real in general. And I haven't obviously seen the merger documents, but they're probably done by...
And actually, you know, what, if I may, one of the things, one of the things actually I may do, I may also, because, because of your background, I may, I may wanna also have Dan contact you directly as well because I know, you know... Dan, Dan was actually with me at the town of, no, no, but, no, just to be blunt, Dan was with me at the town of Newpaltz. And so, when Kevin Berry had questions, who was also a member of the bar, had questions, Dan was able to answer them just directly.
I'm, I'm not speaking anything against it, but I mean, this, this is a big undertaking. And if somebody's not monitoring, if you get to the end of the road and...
And I can understand that, I can understand that, that concern.
Part where you share duty to the citizen, right? It's a happy deal.
Yep, yep.
And I just wanna add one other thing, which is that, um, uh, what was the consumer? It's called the Consumer Protection Board, has been disbanded by the governor. And so, um, the consortium that we're forming is almost like, um, our own, our own, our own, uh, consumer protection. Because we don't have that anymore. So, this is, this is what we have.
But, Rosalyn, I would ask.
Yeah.
The fees are quite high.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought three thirty.
And...
Yeah, but I, I understand that.
You're here in, uh, Hudson Valley.
But here's, yeah, no, sure, but again, you know, in a day, he's a utility, you know, this is a specialized fee. I'm not gonna go and defend Dan's, Dan's, Dan's fees, but yeah, that's just...
It's going to need careful monitoring, because
Sure.
travel expenses are, are on top of the hourly fee. All copying, all paper, all secretarial work is on top of the hourly fee. Okay? So, we're talking about big bucks.
Which is why, again, there's an amount not to exceed, and that, that was done very deliberately because the idea be...
The amount to exceed might be concluded very quickly.
We're, we're working on it.
Where is Belvin?
I think, isn't that Warwick? I think he's, I think he's...
It's, it's, it's actually Orange County, yeah. It's Orange County.
And then, um, is, is there some place where someone set out a few pages? These are the pros and these are the cons and this specifically other than generally? Is there something like that? This is a bad deal because one, two, three, four...
Well, I mean, if, if, if you saw the resolutions that have been passed, I'm sure you, you know, you, you already know, you already know some of those, those, uh, those points anyway, but yeah.
Prepare the document that the reason we're fighting is because of these twenty items.
Yeah, and it is about tw- and it is about twenty items. No, I'll, I'll, I'll actually, I'll email you tonight. I'll, I'll email you tonight, so...
We should know that before we go out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you probably have this as well, yeah, so... Yeah, and, and actually, just one, one last, this little point, and I apologize, um, you know, to a certain degree, this is somewhat of a coalition in, in, in different ways. You, you do have some people who are absolutely opposed to this, no matter what, you know, with regards to Fortis. You've got some people who are opposed to this just as the deal that, as it's currently constituted. And you've got, yeah, and you've got some folks who maybe have some specific questions or concerns about the, the service delivery end of things. And so, or, or they're union, you know, folks, and so, they're, they're concerned about, on the job front. So, it, it's people of, of sort of different, maybe coming at it from, from different perspectives, but they're all in agreement that right now, as things are currently constituted, we have a problem. And unfortunately, time just sort of, uh, is of the essence. So, I'm really appreciative that you guys will be also addressing this next week and I welcome the opportunity to come back.
I guess the last question, over now.
Okay, for now.
Are you calm though?
If fifteen hundred dollars was, was all we had to pay ever, you know, then it wouldn't be, all these details wouldn't be done for. But I find that that's gonna be hard to believe to get to the end of the road. It's gonna cost a total of fifteen hundred, sounds great, but... Uh, and the other question is, all right, so this has been proposed and it's defeated somehow. There's been a bureaucratic process and it's not approved. So, what's the alternative then? Central Hudson in, in trouble and they're not gonna be able to stay the power company or they'll sell it to someone else?
I'm, I'm not here to go speak on behalf of Central Hudson, sir.
But what are, what are the consequences if it doesn't go through? I mean, I, everyone seems to think this is a bad idea and probably is, but what happens if it's not approved?
Anything that I would answer would be pure speculation, so...
But maybe we gotta look at that.
And that's a good answer.
But I, I don't mind speculating.
It's the right answer.
I do, so we're not going to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna speculate, okay. Um, um, okay, so I just wanna ask you, is your assumption that because there's a merger, that Central Hudson needs this to, you know, move into the future? Is that, is that what I mean?
Excuse me, didn't turn the email off, or I will? Um, I don't have any assumptions.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, because I don't know the details.
Right, okay.
But I, you know... If there's these reasons to fight it, we fight it. But what, what happens next when you defeat it? Is there something worse gonna happen or is there a better proposal or what? Where do we stand on it? Uh, that's just my natural question.
I, 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 no, and I, I actually understand where it comes from. I appreciate it and honestly, it's, it's floated through my mind. But like I said, right now, we're, we're, uh, anything I would tell you right now would be absolutely pure speculation. I can speculate in private, but I won't do so in public. I try not to.
Hopefully, someone knows before you get, you get too heavy.
I invite you both to come back next week.
Thank you.
And we'll try and formulate our questions.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, we'll send you, I, I took notes and we'll put some things together and send you some more things.
And you gave the biography to Katie.
Yeah, she just sent it to us.
You have it.
Yeah, we just got it. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, someone.
Okay, bye bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Goodbye, dear, all right?
I'll see you soon.
Okay. All right, if people don't mind, I'm gonna ask Kurt to join us because we have a number of things to talk about. I saw Mr. Cusson, did you see that?
He might have just stepped out.
Oh, he stepped out? Okay. Um, Kurt, please join us. We're gonna talk about the B three, which has been floating around for a while. And we just got this and I apologize for us just getting it because it was only added to the agenda. And this is the revised document that Kurt and Joe came up with encompassing some of our questions and answering some things and refining things. And if we recall, Ariana very astutely spotted the fact that we couldn't have a hearing on it 'cause we hadn't called for a hearing and things hadn't been finished. So, take it away, sir. we hadn't called for a hearing, and things hadn't been finished, so, take it away, sir.
Thank you, the first, um, there is a correction, um, Village Council, Dora Earl, had helped me with the, putting this in the form of a local law, and I see that the title, amending of the definitions in section two twelve of the code, um, and the Village of New Falls establishing North Chestnut Street Gateway District have been inadvertently combined, so the correction there would be to, um, remove the first part, and just leave the portion that says, um, a local law to establish the North Chestnut Street Gateway District, I apologize for that. And however, the content is as it should be, and it is in local law form, um, the second, section one, second, section amended, and intent, legislative intent is as we intended it to be, and this is the same that the full board has seen before in terms of the legislative intent, section two is the actual amendments to our code. I will, I will say that what I've done is restored what is currently permitted under the use of automobile, automobile repair shops. That's been restored, it was first proposed to be removed, and we also can, of course, considered it as a, um, as a non-conforming use, which could be expanded, in the end, the things that are, the, the outcome that would be most satisfactory that I heard about in the outreach committee meetings, and also from various comments from village board members, is that we would be protecting the interests of, of not only those who, who will develop under the new regs, but those who have invested so much in their properties and their businesses along North Chestnut. I feel it's a more than reasonable compromise, um, over time, the district will take shape, unfortunately, it won't take shape overnight. I wish it would, but it's not, so, um, so these, these, um, these places are, these establishments are going to coexist with the new development, and I don't foresee a conflict, or perhaps it may be revisited by a village board in the future, but at this point, it's a very reasonable compromise. I also had, um, notes from both the, the mayor and from village council, and, um, and I took them under advisement, and I tried to adjust, for example, front yard, we talked about zero lot line, um, what I, what I propose is ten feet maximum rather than zero or five feet minimum. The reason for that is simply, simply put, smart growth codes always talk about a right of way and zero lot line, that's fine. However, when you're redeveloping an existing state highway corridor, where the state had acquired the right of way itself to New York thirty-two, um, over a period of time, what you have is discrepancies, when you measure from the center line of the road to the front property line, and in some cases, as we help some of these developers develop, they may even need to lease land from the New York State Department of Transportation in some sort of semi-permanent lease to build and create that corridor and that uniform building line that we're seeking here. So, but that's just the reality of redevelopment and creating this district, as opposed to creating it from scratch. Otherwise, things like maximum floor areas ratio, height, and, um, and uses, they all remain as they were, the parking calculations that we talked about, and giving developers the option of, um, of treating parking more as an amenity, whereas the special use permit, which some had said, um, is it really necessary to have a special use permit for the hotel use? Well, it is in as much as, and it doesn't really add substantive bureaucracy, but it is in, in as much as we're not providing as much slack with regard to the parking requirement to hoteliers, because, of course, those folks are gonna come to New Falls at a hotel to be built, and they're gonna wanna leave their cars. That's the benefit of having a hotel right in, in, on North Chestnut Street in New Falls, is they need ample parking for people traveling, and then they can leave their cars and you, and use modes of, yeah, yeah, those other modes of transportation, so, um, we have this, and of course, what remains, you know, of course, after this is, um, is the overlay, the overlay of sustainable construction practices, um, and also such things as, um, access management. In other words, trying to limit the number of individual points of access from, from roads that have a lot of traffic, particular state and county roads, so those things will be proposed next as overlays and affecting all, all districts in the village, rather than simply being associated with this district.
I'm glad you answered my question before I asked it regarding the sustainable building, um, because that was my next question.
That's an overlay.
It would be an overlay.
I mean, we talked about that at the table here, um, just the idea of that, you know, for sustainable building, we don't necessarily need it in each section of the zoning code, we want it to be something that is general for all New Falls. Um, I guess my, my question is going to be, is that in the works, but you already answered that, and that would be one of the next things.
It must be, and actually, I, I know what you mean, it's, um, it's making sure that the sequencing is pretty tight there, so that, um, uh, no project is, is complete before proposing these types of things, so, aside from the State Environmental Quality Review Act and other regulations we have, we were talking about much more specific regulations, and I have, uh, there are people in the community who are, who are at my disposal to consult with, and they will be greatly, that's greatly appreciated, basically volunteers, um, one is already a member of the Bike Ped Committee, but he is so-called LEED certified, um, so there are resources in the community, and, um, and the mayor has provided me with at least one other individual who's also well-qualified within the community, and I think that we can, um, we can propose something that, um, that should at least go to public hearing, and then we'll, we'll hear comments from, um, from, from those who are concerned with that, but that would be, that would be the very next step.
Um, I don't know if you were, I don't think you were at the TIC meeting, where they came and basically, there's been something that's kind of been in the works for almost a decade, um, I, I believe is what they were saying, and it is the access management, specifically off of the state highways and state routes, and it's, I, for, for those listening at the table, and I know Sally's not, because she was also at the meeting, um.
It, it is tenured.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I, that's what I thought, um, but this has been something, long time, a long time in the works, that the DOT has worked in conjunction with Dave Plaza and the town attorney, uh, on doing this, where basically it is, for instance, um, like the Stop and Shop Plaza, or, yeah, Stop and Shop Plaza, and like the medical center, you, you have to go back onto Main Street to access one or the other, but this would increase the interconnectivity, which half of me, right, half of me likes, and half of me makes it feel like the mall of America, um, like in Georgia, you know, where everything, it's like, you get lost on the mall roads, and the, it's shopping plaza of roads, because you're like, where the hell am I? But, uh, but at the same time, it would do a lot, I think, for our, like, having more shared driveways, and and a lot of it was about, like, you know, the number of feet of frontage of each parcel, and whether or not in future development, shared driveways can happen more often, so that there's only one access point to each, to two properties, for instance, so that there's less points of entrance and exit, basically.
I wasn't sure what that meant.
I, I wasn't either before that meeting, so.
You get the job.
And we're all aware that as development is taking place, again, over time, as opposed to, um, as opposed to our original, um, our original neighborhood or community, the Huguenot District, and then Main Street, these things, of course, happened before zoning was even recognized as a term, so of course, you see how good things can happen without regula, it's actually tougher these days, so it's, it's, um, it's project by project, and then anticipating and planning to, to be able to limit the access points, and we all know that it, it can be frustrating to see what has, um, popped up, my favorite is where you're not permitted to make a left turn out of a particular establishment, unless that were to be a reuse of an establishment, if that were something new, like especially, it happens a lot with fast food restaurants, um, it's, um, you really wonder what they're thinking, because they're either funneling people to, through local streets where they don't know where they're going, or I guess you could circumnavigate the globe and come back, instead of making a left, you make that right, and drive about seventeen thousand. It's almost, it's almost, you know, the worst. Yes.
Overall, I wanna thank you, because you did at least, according to my notes, incorporate my concerns and questions that I asked when we discussed this last, and Ariana, yours were too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I guess my only, my only question, I, I don't even know if I was a concern necessarily, because I was at all the meetings with the people that would be affected by this, the Business Association, the Chamber was there, the Huguenot Historical Society, and Historic Preservation Commission, all these people represented, as well as business owners in the current B three, um, and we, we had a lot of different input from sections of the community, were, the, the list here, um, basically V through J, um, was that stuff, is that stuff that they all felt comfortable with? Uh, I'm only asking because I know we talked a lot about not replicating, um, the current, and, and it doesn't really replicate much of the current, um, and I just was, I guess my, my big question is limited business retail, what does that exactly mean?
Okay, and actually, and again, I, I wanna give, um, credit to Joe, because he has, in, in other tasks that he's done, such as definitions.
Ah, that's, that's in those definitions.
And yes, actually, they, they include things that, that certainly are fixtures on, on Main Street and Water Street Market, they include, you know, tea houses and, and coffee, and coffeehouses, however, it's, I guess I'm concerned that I wouldn't wanna take away, take that away from, from market forces, well, I wouldn't wanna have saturation of it, I, I, you know, by the same token, um, they all have, some of them each have their own character, and I think as, as hundreds of additional residents are added at North Chestnut, I think that there'll be, um, there'll be an audience for, for the exist, um, our, our shops, our coffee shops that exist, as well as, as the new ones.
I, and I, I have to say, I would agree with that, just because of the idea, like, I, I mean, depending on where I've lived in the community, I've frequented different places for my coffee, uh, and I would go to someplace every day, and then a different place every day, depending on where I've lived in the community, so I can imagine if I was living there, I would wanna go to the one closest to me. Um, so I totally, I, I totally agree with that, all right, um, that was my only, that was my only question, really, about that part of it.
Ari, this has not been to the county yet.
It has been, however, um, uh, what the county told us was that we did not need to send it to them again unless there was a, a drastic change. Um, clearly, the, the most significant change would be the vehicle repair, but in my conversations with them, and in their written response on the referral, it was that they said they did not need to see it if we addressed their, their concerns as, as they mentioned them, which was a little bit more specific about uses, and, um.
Do you by any chance have in front of you what their referral said?
I don't have.
Basically, what I remember that they didn't have questions, they.
Cause I just can't, I can't recall.
They were, they were, um, they were solid planning commentaries, how, and however, some of them were a little bit generalized in the sense that they, they said, take another look at, at how this flows, and how it reads, and how instructive is it, and, and, and helpful to those seeking to use it, um, those things.
Is that what was, like, adjusted in this?
Yes, though many of those things were adjusted, um, but again, uh, they said that unless there, unless there were to be another, another tack, another approach altogether, that, that they did not need to see it once again, which was a question I had for them, and they answered it, so.
And our planning board has reviewed it.
That was gonna be my next question.
You're reading my mind, and I'm reading yours.
Our planning board has reviewed it, however, um, I'm not sure that they've reviewed it since the, since we've added back in the, um, uh, the, the vehicle repair use that is, that is currently allowed there, and I'm, I'm not so sure that it requires a second referral to the planning board, and I wouldn't wanna, in, I wouldn't wanna hinder them having their voice.
And two weeks' notice is enough, Katie, for a public hearing call, for a public.
Oh, certainly, if you'd like to, if you'd like to host, if you'd like to have a public hearing, the third, excuse me, the last weekend, last meeting in May, absolutely.
Because Stuart and Brian have been in on this for so long, I'd like them to have an opportunity.
To see it through.
Yes, to see it through, I mean, I have a motion for a hearing.
But, all right, before we do that, my only question is in terms of the green building, sustainable building stuff, when can we expect to see something about, on that, because I would like to time it, I, I don't have a problem with setting a public hearing on this, I just would like to time it.
Well, you're right, because we.
Somewhat in conjunction, and we're gonna need the county to see that, and the planning board to see that, and.
That's true, and, and, and you're right that, now, of course, we would, we're, we would, um, we intend to lift the moratorium on this particular district, of all the districts that are under the moratorium, and so we, we do have control over when it's lifted, um, obviously, there, there are many keen LEED watching when we lift it, um, but the, I would say that within, uh, by the, but let's say the first meeting in June, I'd like to have something, uh, at, at least a list of options with substance for the board to consider, and again, it's been an interesting, it's been an interesting task, because, um, um, LEEDs is, is very interesting, that you will not get that certification until your project is complete, and they actually do an audit, which is a great way to verify.
It's a six-month af, six months after the building has been.
Would it be pressing you, and you're allowed to say, yes, don't do this to me?
Thank you.
Would it be pressing you to have that list for us the same time we have the hearing?
Uh, yes, actually, what it would be is, instead of being a draft section, a draft local law or a section of the code, it would be a more, more of an outline with substantive information, but it, it wouldn't be full code.
The form we need.
It would be more, more of a report.
It would give you a sense of what you're looking for, yes?
It would.
It would be, it would be in the, the, the form of a, of a report that would show, what, what options have I found and considered, and.
And recommend.
Yeah, and how would they be undertaken, and what would they achieve?
Would that work? I guess my biggest, my only, my only issue is because if we get that, when we're having a public hearing, how long will it take us to look at it, respond to it, go through the process, and then recommend?
If he could get it to us for that meeting, that night, you know, for the meet, and you have a chance to review it ahead of time, and you found it satisfactory, and Kurt was recommending it, we could set a hearing that night for it.
Well, we couldn't, because it wouldn't be ready to go, it would just be a list.
Yes, I'm hesitant to say that, that I could have draft code that would be appropriate to go to public hearing on that day. What I'd have is a report that I think would allow you to let me know your preferences about which system would achieve what, and how, and how cumbersome would it be? Uh, okay, I mean, we could, um.
Well, I mean, let's be honest about this, we do have a little LEED time, speaking of LEEDs, a little LEED time, because, but if we pass the B three, goes up, becomes law, then you have a certain period of time where people who want to develop things there need to see their architects and need to get their plans, by that time, you would have in place what you're asking for.
Yeah, but I feel like it would be unfair to those people.
Well, no, because they would, we could tell them we're working on this, and expect it to be part of. Yes?
Yeah, but we don't have established, if we don't have, if we have a list.
No, we will though, by that time.
Well, we're gonna have a list of things.
You'd have a report, and basically, it would be a.
Right, and we still have to pick and choose out of it, so realistically, like, if we, let's say we approved, two, two weeks from now, we, we had the public hearing, there were no objections, we said, all right, let's go through with it, we're now opening the opportunity for people to start developing there, not knowing what our standards are gonna be for green development.
They can't start developing until it becomes enacted in law, which is thirty days from the passing of.
And, and the moratorium is lifted, however, Brian's.
Well, doesn't the moratorium lift once the public hearing?
Not automatically, no, what we're doing is, it's fairly progressive, in the sense that most moratoriums are more lengthy, or they're extended, we don't plan to do that, and I must tell you, regardless of whether I've rewritten every district, I don't think it's necessary, and it's very difficult to justify when our zoning and planning board agendas are, are rather light, so, in other words, and I've even found, since I've, since I've come here, I've found some things in our code that may have helped us in some of the things last summer, just before I arrived, that were enacted. There are some things in our code that can work for us, such that we wouldn't really, um, we wouldn't really be losing the neighborhood character that we enacted the moratorium to preserve while we, during this period.
I also would like to suggest, Ariana, that when we came into office, which is now two years ago.
We had this at the beginning of the start.
This was a prior, and I think. It's not fair to not deal with it, so.
My, my question on the moratorium, it doesn't automatically lift, I thought it did as we approved things.
No, in other words.
What do we have to do to lift it on each zone?
Take it away, I think it was.
It would be a.
A motion was a piece of it already, right?
As each area was developed and approved by the board, then it would be lifted, but I think it requires board action to lift it on that specific area.
It does, because lifted them.
Katie, would you, in your many three moments, of which you have zero, um, would you check exactly the timing of the moratorium, and whether it is item by, or zone by zone, that it gets lifted?
It definitely is.
Definitely is, I, I think it is too.
But I will, but I will find you in the manner of.
Whether we have to take action.
Well, the, yeah, and I, I believe the answer is yes, because what we're doing is, is somewhat unusual, and I think progressive, in the sense that, um, A, we don't plan on pushing the limits of the time, of the, the time of the moratorium, which so many communities do, and the courts have actually tolerated a little more and more time, but we're not looking to set new law in that regard, we wanna lift it, and we also, we must recognize, I think, that, um, that with the real estate sector, the construction sector, still not having come back, um, uh, to even before where it peaked, um, it, it's, it's difficult to justify it, and I feel now that I know our code better, I feel that there are some provisions I have at my disposal that weren't, they weren't invoked, but they, they would have helped with some of the, some of the issues that led up to the two local laws that were adopted last summer, so, um, uh, but actually, it does take deliberate action to lift the moratorium, um, from zone to zone, um. Um, it hopefully wouldn't be cumbersome, but it takes it, you know?
So, I think, I think there prob- if we...
With, with everything that has gone on, I feel comfortable setting a public hearing.
If we do due diligence, we can accomplish this all.
Yeah.
And finally, finish something we promised.
Yeah, and Kurt, I would be happy to meet with you and go through that list, since I think I'm probably going to be the most nitpicky out of all of us, uh, prior to it coming to the floor.
It depends, it depends.
Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I imagine I will be the most nitpicky out of all of us, maybe, maybe that's not true.
I would like, I would like to include you, especially in meetings with, with those people in the community who have expertise in this area.
I would love to see that.
As a, as a village board liaison, I think, I think it would be ideal to have you along with those meetings.
Cool.
Okay, before we act on the hearing, I'd like a motion to appoint Ariana as the liaison to the planner on development of projects in the community.
Do we, do we have that authority to set this?
Well, he asked for liaison.
Or is that the mayor's authority?
I don't know.
So, I don't think we should do that till we know.
Okay, we get that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it needs to be, it needs to be very official, um, because this is... Oh, okay.
With all, with all things considered, I think that Sally is wise in saying such, but I think we should heed Stuart's comments as well.
Yeah, yeah, would you put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
And we should ask Joe.
Do liaisonship, who can apply...
And check with the attorney.
I, I have the one question, do you, as far as you know, do you have all the comments for the mayor on this?
Um, well, actually, I have, um, I have changed, uh, some of the, the minor points, some of them were really, again, it was almost, for example, one might have been, um, zero lot line versus five feet or allowing up to ten feet, rather than mandating zero, and again, um, uh, the mayor was actu- absolutely right, as, as a planning precept, um, that's great, except in along New York thirty-two and so many other state highways and where you're not doing this, when you're doing this in real life for redevelopment, the, um, there's not a uniform front, uh, front lot lines, and that means that you're, you're not gonna be able to accomplish that that easily. So, I'm not gonna say that we came to an agreement, no, we haven't, the last time we talked, um, it, it, it ended open, uh, open-ended really on that, and the other issues were, were somewhat similar, um, for example, um, buffers along the sideline where we're not fortunate enough to have people, um, joining the buildings together, even though they're separate properties, separate owners and separate developers. We'd be very fortunate if two neighboring property owners came to us in tandem and independently and, and did this. Um, I don't wanna rule it out, but we'd be fortunate, so, um, there was certainly, there were comments on the margin, um, from, uh, from the mayor to me about, um, about why would we need this? It sort of, it sort of seems to be replicating sort of a suburban commercial style, but, um, but when we're gonna have parking on the side and there's going to, and even if we're minimizing the parking standards, there's going to be considerable parking on the side, so, I, I, I chose to leave, to leave that in, except where the buildings are to be joined, and then there's no need for that, so we're not mandating it, we're not encouraging it, but recognize that we'd be fortunate if the situation was otherwise.
Well, it's saying fifteen foot minimum.
Yes.
So, so if, unless the buildings are going to be adjoined, they have to have a fifteen foot setback on the side?
Yes, and again, that, that's because...
Why don't we just leave that open-ended and if, a- and have instead, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm jaded, so...
No.
Um, but, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna put this out there, I'm willing to be flexible, but why don't we allow for a fifteen foot side yard setback without requiring it? So that if somebody says, I want to have side yard parking, they could put the parking on the side, but if they'd like to have more of a, you know, main street walkability, then we're not, you know, kinda prohibiting that.
Would just putting up to a minimum door?
Yes, as a matter of fact, um, adding, let's see, okay, adding to that provision on side yards, um, well, instead of saying the, eliminate the word minimum and maybe put, um, how about zero fif- zero to fifteen feet at the discretion of the planning board in addition to the provision of...
I like that, yeah, of course. Because, because I like, I like this idea of having these, you know, adjoining buildings and if they're two, you know, property owners that would like to do that, I think that's awesome, but I, I think if we want to create this feeling that we're talking about, the connectivity, you know, giving property owners the freedom to do that is important, yeah.
Yes, and again, actually, I think that would, um, uh, that would work well, um, and again, it's, um, it's not necessary at all where we happen to be fortunate enough to have two adjacent owners, um, planning something together and seeing the, the benefit of doing that at the same time, the same thing.
And we do love the opportunity to keep the hearing open.
Right.
And, you know, should the public or...
Yeah.
You know, the board have further concerns or planning board members might attend? So, I'm gonna ask, um, I have one other thing.
Well, just, uh, just very quickly, I wanted to mention that these types of relatively minor, um, changes,
again, you may not have to go back to the county, and so I just wanted to mention that if there was any concern. The other thing I'll mention is for, there was another comment, um, about, um, I'm requiring, where there is, where there does need to be, because of the number of residential units or hotel or something like that, inter- what's called interior landscaping, which means that instead of just creating, if you're familiar with some of the, um, larger department stores built in the seventies, it's almost like a, um, with reckless abandon, you can speed through a parking lot because there's nothing except the occasional light pole to stop you, and, and, you know, it... Yeah, and also, by the way, so, so that's why that is, that's why that's there, in other words, let's say we do have, uh, it may be a grocery store, it may be, um, um, again, a hotel, so what you wanna do is, is have those things that allow for, um, create places for pedestrians as well, what they do also is they allow for infiltration that serves to assist in stormwater, um, management and stormwater cleansing naturally, so there, there's a, there's a basis for that, but I know exactly where the mayor's coming from, and, and, and he's familiar with smart growth principles, and, um, again, it, it's, sometimes you don't always have the opportunity to start with a clean palate.
So, I guess, let's, trust in my question was, has he had the opportunity to make all of his comments on it? Maybe you two don't agree on it, the hearing will decide what's gonna happen, but he has had the opportunity to provide input on whatever's in this right now.
Um, he has, however, he had called for, um, he had, he had just for the mayor, I'm sorry, the mayor, I, and, and village council to meet together for some, for a rather intensive discussion of the remaining items.
So, I, I guess the question is, we had, uh, set a hearing tonight, and then you have that meeting about the intensive items.
Well, that, this would preempt that.
You know, that's the question.
Oh.
This would preempt...
The mayor could have been present tonight to this...
I was just going to say that, thank you, Ariana.
But at least you know that, yeah.
I'm going to ask for a motion for to set the hearing?
I have one more thing, I'm sorry, seven A, maximum coverage by impervious surfaces. I'm assuming that includes the building itself?
It does.
Okay, well, because that's about eighty-five percent or the significant percentage.
I saw that too, and I thought, that must be the building.
Yes, and actually, well, it's actually all impervious surfaces, now, we, again, we hope to, we hope to, to have our developers avail themselves to a variety of things, not only from, uh, sustainable construction, but also even pervious pavement options.
Right, okay, and it says pervious parking facilities may be required by the planning board, so I think that's, yeah.
Right, and, um, but what we're doing is, we are, make no mistake, we're, we're offering a lot of opportunity for developers, and we also realize that because this area is constrained a little bit, especially on the west side of the road by the flood plain and some federal wetlands, everyone who knows the village and knows that area knows that it's constrained. What we're doing is, once you preserve those areas and treat them with the dignity they deserve, then we're allowing you to go four stories where the building, where the portion of the lot is, yeah. So, we're, we're trying to, um, cover both, uh, both ends of this.
And I just might say, sometime in the future, I would love if we could figure out how, how to have an architectural review board for new construction and reconstruction, but that's way down the pike.
Sure, but it's, many communities have it, as you know, so...
So, the interior parking lot landscaping, that's what you were just talking about in terms of... Is there, I guess my question is regarding rain gardens, because one of the main things you said was stormwater management. So, do we want to include that in this, or will that be in a, in our green infrastructure overlay?
I think it would be...
Because I'm okay with either, I just wanna put it out there.
Sure, and I think, I think the, the answer is that it would, um, um, that, well, we were, I had proposed that we would use the, um, the sequel process to require the, the preferred choices, the preferred alternatives. Now, now, well, in a lot of cases, we, you know, we may from time to time be disappointed in the way a sequel process is run, but this ordinance and the discretion, this law, I'm sorry, local law, and, and it's the discretion that it gives in certain places to the planning board, um, no community can write such regulations that without the right, the right folks with the right state of mind, um, that you, you can't write a, of regulations good enough that if you don't have good people in those, in those positions, and I have, I have faith in our planning board that they will embrace these things, and, and I see in, in, in some other codes, um, uh, where, where things have turned out very well, they provide discretion, they're not overly prescriptive, but again, because they're, they're counting on those members of the community to, um, to embrace these things and not, and not, um, uh, discount the idea behind them. So, just to answer Ariana's question, um, the rain gardens, I would like, yes, I think in the overlay, I, I would like to...
Because we should have them apply to everything, could have it everywhere.
Right, it's not, it's not just the buildings themselves, but their surroundings on the site, and that's, and it's really important and it's really catching on. I've seen a lot of li- public library projects, um, where they've, they've been embraced, these are actually new construction.
But I mean, even in our own parks, if we had the overlay, it would apply to our own parks, our own parking lot if we redeveloped?
I, I hope it would, that means we have to, see, we're not bound by our own zoning, but it would be nice if we'd set, set the tone.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
My example.
Yeah, I, and thank you, yeah.
If I expect the community to do something, this government should be doing it too.
Thank you, and I think that means a lot to those in pri- in the private sector.
Personally, that way, I, I hold myself to the same standards I hold other people, I hold the government to the same standards.
It's something we all strive for.
Would you like to have the pleasure?
I would love to make a motion to set a public hearing on this, um, on the local law to establish the North Chestnut Street Gateway District on, is it May twenty-second?
Yes, yes, it is, May twenty-second.
God, I wish I didn't have some big calendar dates in my head.
Okay, is there a second?
At seven thirty?
Oh, yeah, or, yeah, seven thirty.
I'll second.
Okay, second, any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I...
Are you gonna cause more trouble?
Probably.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to setting the hearing as much as, I'd like to be done with this, and so, people who have things they're planning to do can move on, but, uh, you know, the, I believe the mayor has the right to meet with people and, and study it anytime, so, if we set the public hearing and they meet and study it and he has a different opinion, I guess he can bring that out at the public hearing, and if the decision is to change it radically, then we may have to hold the hearing open or do another hearing or something, but I don't, I don't...
I wanna...
But I, but I, I, I don't want us to take some action that, say, preempts that from him and whoever meeting on this topic before that topic, because I don't think that's right.
Actually, the, the instruction...
I may disagree with him on it, but I don't think that's probable.
Just let me familiarize with the, the, the recent history, and the mo- the newest thing was, um, was his instructions this morning, okay? So, we were, we were planning on meeting, Joe, of course, is out of town, as he informed the village that he would be out of town a few days, um, he might have hoped that the meeting would take place, um, while he was away, so, it, it can't take place at that time, however, I received new instructions this morning, and I hadn't really thought about it. The new instructions I received from him were extremely clear, and they said that, and he said that by Friday, he wants Joe. No, again, Joe will not be back till this weekend from his conference, but...
I think this is inappropriate, I'm gonna stop you, and I'm gonna stop you. The board, the board of trustees has been involved in the discussion of this. All of us had ample opportunity to discuss it, whether people have certain priorities or not priorities, that is fine, that is done at the board table, if at the hearing, either the public, the committee that worked on this or any board member raises serious issues, or Kurt himself says, oh, I forgot something, then the hearing is held open and we discuss it.
And we can change it at that point.
That's right.
And, and I, I will say that I spoke with our attorney about the legal side of whether or not this is ready to go, and he said it is.
Okay.
Right, there were, there was discussion of some planning, some planning aspects of it that were remaining, yeah.
And I would also add that we hired a professional planner to help us develop zones, plans with the best professional expertise...
And a holistic mindset, which I think you have...
And brings to this table, and I respect his professionalism and I respect what he has done for us. And so, is there any more discussion? All right, on the motion.
I guess the point is, if we set the hearing, then the mayor and the planner and the, and the lawyer can...
Everybody has...
Anytime they want to, right?
He can meet with whoever he wants to, he should be meeting with the village board at the village board table.
I, I...
It's had two weeks.
I understand that, but that's not the point, the point is that it can be done, and by the hearing, whatever passes, it'll be brought out at the hearing.
Yes, he can, he can say and do whatever he wants.
There's a process in place, and it will be carried and followed during more discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
We didn't vote yet.
Vote, I don't have a cookie to bribe you with.
I'm mad now, now I'm mad.
Oh, please, forgive me.
It's not about you, it's about the person who isn't here.
I know.
And that guy who said all those, not you, the guy who's sitting in that chair, done.
Stop it, just vote.
I'm sorry, I'm upset.
So, four ahs.
Very good, um, Kurt, would you like to give us an update on where we are with graffiti? And where we are with the parking guidelines versus that, that which is a set in stone? And then we'll have an executive session on your recommendation.
Thank you, yes, the, um, uh, the, the graffiti law, of course, the last time I met with the board, um, we talked about me revisiting some of the aspects of it, in particular, the fact that the burden would be entirely on private property owners to remove this. Um, I conferred with a few people working in other communities, and, um, for example, I found that in, in the city of Poughkeepsie that their public works department was, um, was given funds by the city council to purchase a, so, um, a piece of special equipment, which is, of course, a high-pressure, um, um, a high-pressure piece of equipment and perhaps, um, some sort of, um, mixture of chemicals that go along with it to remove it, yeah, I know, well, we have to, yeah. But, um, but anyway, I, I realized that in many cases, that's the way it's addressed, um. I just had received enough emails and, and seen, and seen letters in the paper that I, I thought this was, um, that it needed to be done, um, before, but in, in any case, that, after speaking with you that evening, I said, so that's, I don't know that, i- it remains an issue as to whether the village board would like to, um, put that burden on private property owners who, like we said, it would, it would be a, a second phase of, of correcting something that they obviously had nothing to do with.
Do you have another solution?
Um, other than, other than the purchase of, well, let's put it this way, that the purchase of, um, perhaps, um, a piece of equipment that would, would do that, which I'm, which I'd like to get more specifications for you, and then...
Would you be able to bring that back next week?
I'd like to.
Well, I've got one, I got one.
You have a blaster?
No, I have a solution.
Oh.
What if we get a team of artists, and one of those graffiti, we can send them out and they can do a nice piece of art?
I don't think I'd like that in my house.
And then...
On private property, yeah.
Well, it will, it will, well, if it's like on a fence on the side, maybe they can just opt to do that instead of blasting everything with chemicals.
But I hate it.
I mean, that's like we're getting ideas, what about baking soda, medicine?
Well, I'll tell you what, how about, like, lemon juice, lemon juice, and...
I'll never remove graffiti myself, so I don't know.
But if you could get quotes for us and talk with Blue and see how reasonable this is, and would it be possible, and I don't even know whether it would be legal, so you'd have to check with Joe for me, that if a private property owner or a non-public, such as a, let's just say, something happened on Yugueno Street, could we rent it out minimally or lend it out so that they could...
Right, so they could do it and we don't have our guys on that one?
Yeah. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, and so that takes care, um, because you were concerned about the burden and I think that's a very legitimate concern.
And I found that even, even in the village of New Paltz, if you go back to some point in time in the past, there was, um, a, um, either, either the Rotary or a similar type paternal organization that actually did perform this service. And and in a way, that's the way it was addressed, and I don't know exactly when, um, this was, but there was an era.
But I think getting it pulled on a machine is a good idea.
Sure.
And and by the way, let me, I, I said, um, chemicals, let's see what, let's see what they're talking, let's see what these, these, this equipment actually uses.
But what about the idea that DPW is not to do work on private property?
No, 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 we would rent it to the person. With, you're saying, would.
They could just pay someone to come do high, you know, a pressure, high, a pressure power wash.
Well, but the business of them paying, I thought was a concern to the board.
Well, if they're renting it.
Well, they're, in essence, they're.
Then they're paid.
Or if they're not renting it, they're taxed paying for it.
Well, but but, I mean, by renting, I meant someone being able to borrow it.
Or even.
Yes.
And I don't know whether it's legal.
Or even have the village have it available. If you have graffiti, we have a department and you can arrange an appointment, somebody come over and help you do it.
Right, now that, that.
If that's the pay point, then that's what Ariana's.
Yeah, but that's, that's village employees doing work on private property.
But that's, again, that, I know that rule, I know that rule, but I don't believe that that has stopped communities from having some sort of partnership to remove graffiti where it's.
Could you inquire of the communities that you've become aware of, how they handle graffiti on private property?
Well, be, yeah, because maybe there's some kind of, you know, way around it or something we can add to the law that way, yeah.
That rule is not absolute, and I wouldn't wanna, but I wouldn't wanna turn the tide and say that that DPW would get involved in private properties, no. But there are some exceptions. There are some exceptions, and I need to talk to the DPW superintendent. Um, I haven't had a conversation with him about this yet. I wanted to compile more information, do the best I could to go to him equipped with some knowledge.
So, but next week.
I mean, my, my issue with making exceptions is that we've had things in the past that I would have made an exception for.
Now, we want it legal and proper.
I know, I'm just saying, I don't think that graffiti is, I, I mean, I think that there were situations where it warranted an exception, in my opinion, and graffiti is not one of those things that warrants an exception.
I mean.
I disagree because I think there are times when graffiti is applied to places that it shouldn't be as an act of intrusion and the, and it's awful and it's very public, but it's on private property. And perhaps the people who own the property can't afford to hire the blaster.
But there, there are much more serious, um, like functional, functionality issues that I think could have been, that we dealt with as a board, that I think were, you know, I, I don't wanna name, name names or name issues, but I, I think maybe one can infer what I'm talking about.
Okay, I'll ask you later.
Okay, that I think were, you know, more egregious as a condition for living that I would have made an exception for if we're making exceptions.
Okay, I see that this obviously.
This is a, a aesthetic quality of life issue as opposed to a functioning quality.
All we're saying is that the issue came up with the board.
Right.
About the burden. Is there a solution which addresses that burden question? Which is legal and proper for the village to do?
I'm not saying don't look into it. I was just putting that.
And I don't wanna interfere.
Oh, okay.
I don't wanna choose the priorities in this respect either, so I understand that this is, this is not being, this is not a, um, something being done in the back end. And I wanna respect that, because I know that there's.
But we have had it sitting on the back burner waiting for action.
The only other thing I'll mention is that if I understand correctly, there's currently a case of, in other words, applying the graffiti is is more than a minor crime. It's more than like a disorderly person thing or something. So there's a case that's in our municipal court or county if it involves something more serious. And I'd like to see how, how that winds up, because if the punishment is, is, and again, I don't care about fines or or imprisonment. I'm talking about removing what you put there. And if it is.
I'd love to see that as a, you know.
If the outcome of that case, and I don't even know how to find, how to know about it, but if the outcome of that case is not, if it's not handled fairly seriously, then, um, I don't know where we stand, but it changes how much effort I'll spend on initiatives like this if even when we catch a prolific tagger, and this is not an artist, this is a tagger. We're talking about one's initials or 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 even, you know, maybe something associated with, with, um, a, a group or something else. So if if there isn't much of punishment there, then I'm I'm simply gonna, I'm gonna put my, my efforts and energies elsewhere.
Well.
Well, I mean, I can only, I can follow, of course, of course, I'll take direction from the village board.
Next week, if you can, and we'll deal with the other part of this concern.
Got it. Understood.
Yeah, just find out what other municipalities do in terms of this, you know, the power blast and how much of it we get. Thank you.
And on the other subject, yes, on on the parking regulations, which of course the, the planning board was the impetus behind that. And, um, I worked with the planning board and of course we came forth, um, to, uh, which would basically liberalize parking to some extent and drop a, and drop the four hundred foot, um, walking, um, interval that we had used. Um, I, um, I did not, I should have and I did not, um, forward it to the county. And by the time I realized it was too late for May's meet, May's monthly meeting at the county planning board, that means that the only other option is is the first Wednesday when they meet in June. So that referral will be made to them in, before their deadline and they will hear it on June, but I did, I did inadvertently.
And we've kept that hearing open, right? That hearing was kept open. Right, Katie? Or did we close it? Okay.
I, I, I think we closed it.
Did we close it?
On the party requirements.
If the counting had major changes, we would have to then have a second hearing, right?
Understood, yes, yeah.
But I, I thought we closed it. I'm fairly certain, I, I will.
Because we kept it open the first time, I am pretty sure we closed it the second.
And I wanted to note that I apologize for this delay and, um, then I'll take better care of it next time.
How many smacks would the wet move?
Three.
Three.
Maybe I'll like punishment.
May I have a motion to move to executive session for the, for a very short executive session with our planner with the purpose of discussing the future importance of the wetting position.
So.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be ready.
Brian.
If I can get Brian out of his chair.
No, well, I was just wondering if it's at all appropriate to, I mean, if if, if both trustees or future trustees were to be here and invited to it, is it appropriate to invite someone who will be possibly working with this person down the road? That was kinda my feeling.
I have no objection.
We actually, we talked about this idea, um, not actually for tonight, but in general, um.
Cause we have a few, we have a few hirings that we're gonna have to do. I was thinking.
Yeah, with a future, with like advance notice to both, I mean, Tom and Rebecca as well.
I don't, I have no problem. Do you know of any reason we cannot invite Mr. Rocco in with us?
I, I don't, but I am certainly not the expert in.
I was gonna say, I was like, oh, you have to be kidding me.
I am not the expert in that.
Assuming we are not doing.
I don't. Oh, if you're real, that would.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you can do that because somebody is in.
Sworn in, right.
And they're not under any duty at that point.
But I think we're allowed to invite.
Keep pulling to executive session.
Uh, I think however, for tonight, we don't, just because we don't have a legal answer on it.
Okay. Okay.
But we get a legal answer so that all the future hirings that we're going to be doing this month, we can have.
Or we could do it the other way and run the risk of getting smacked and do it anyway.
I like the first.
Oh, all right.
I would be happy to ask you if you want me to.
I, I, I.
What do you think?
And most of the time.
No, no.
The, the, the persons that usually get invited in are people who are members of our staff.
Right.
And that's different.
Or people who are potentially getting hired or interviewed or residents or volunteers.
Absolutely.
Or, or to be interviewed or something.
Right, and they're not members.
Volunteers.
They're not members.
I think you better get a.
There are plenty of people who are not members who come in.
I'm saying.
Well, I, I think it would be prudent of us to get an opinion on it, and if we'd like to do this at a future meeting this month, we can.
Right, well, I mean, he wouldn't be, he wouldn't be part of that.
Right, I think, I think, I think that is the way to go.
I thought you would.
Uh, yeah, I, I would go rather.
And do it in the future.
So I'll say aye then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're all.
We're, we're all.
We're going with the planner. And Katie, would you like to know to check with Joe about?
She's already doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, like, all these, all these emails are going, it happens, it's really awesome.
I think it would be easier if we were doing, if we, he, he might.
All right.
Okay, are we on?
Yeah. Ready? All right, on the, we.
Should I, should I do this now?
Yes, do it right now.
Okay, um, so, let's make a motion, um, based upon recommendations of council. The emergency situation currently with public safety.
In the village.
In the village, within the village. Um, the mayor's absence. The mayor's and correspondence from the mayor to the planner to quote, get whoever you want for temp B one to the board. Um, I hereby, what?
End quote.
End quote. Thank you. Um, I hereby, uh, move to appoint.
Richard F. Travis.
Um, to temporary or acting municipal code enforcement officer at the predetermined hourly rate of twenty dollars and seventy nine cents per hour for a maximum of nineteen hours per week.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Do I have a second?
She needs to that.
One's a second.
Can I have a second, please?
Second, second. Any discussion? What size?
Um, I have a copy, you can keep it if you want.
Any more discussion?
No.
Oh, is that gonna go with the stuff? Are we put, are we including that at the minute?
No.
We're not attaching to the.
Okay, we're.
Yeah, we, we, I quote.
But I do, but I do want the clerk to have a copy. For the box. And if you could make a copy for me for my file.
Of course, thank you.
I'll follow you there.
All right, any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Correct.
I'd like to suggest a five minute break.
Sure.
Right, before we do that, I just wanted to say on our question as to whether or not, um, the board can appoint a trustee to be a liaison to a group or if that's exclusively the decision of the mayor, um, Joe said in the absence of specific law or code, making it the mayor's appointment, the board can do it.
And so would you like us to do it?
Sure.
I will move that Eric, trustee Ariana Bosco be appointed as the board liaison to the planner for.
Sustainable building practices.
For sustainable building practices.
Second that.
Any discussion?
Sounds like a good idea.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Do I go?
And will you inform by email the planner that Ariana has been appointed?
Yep.
Yeah, five minute break.
Thank you.
And I hope I have everything else we have to do.
Uh, well.
Recommendation from our treasurer on items. Item six, okay? And I think it is important that the record show that we did in our discussion with Mr. Sidman say that he had to, the discussion on the future of Woodland Pond would occur and we would be happy to meet, but the bill had to be paid. And that is also the recommendation of our treasurer. And, um, we need to get this taken care of. I would like to recommend, based on her recommendation, that we send a letter, say, from the board that we are open to further discussion on the water rate situation at Woodland Pond. However, as we did state at our meeting of, I think it was the twenty fourth of April, that the bill must be paid. Um, and in addition to that, should that not happen, I would like a motion from the board to turn over the whole matter to our water and sewer attorney, David Mercy. Is there a second to that?
I would point information about that.
Second for purposes of discussion.
Are you putting a date by when it has to be done in this letter before you're gonna turn it over to anybody?
Well, I mean, I believe that we have until May tenth before it gets turned over to the county. That's what I believe it says.
That that happens automatically, so then what is our water attorney have to do?
She is in the process of turn, providing Ulster County a list of unpaid water and sewer balances which have been re-levered on to the homeowner's property taxes as of May tenth. But that's not.
That doesn't say.
It doesn't apply here because they have a pilot.
Right.
So, at what point do you have a suggested date?
Well, I think you ought to give them two weeks or something. And tell them if you don't do it in two weeks, then we'll be forced to turn it over to our attorney, so they know what the rules are.
All right.
I, I would say, yeah, give them till the twenty second.
Mm-hmm.
And at the meeting of the twenty second, if we have not received payment yet, at that point, we can make the motion to turn it over.
No, I, I would rather do it the way I recommend.
Okay, so then put the twenty second as the date.
That, that, that if we have not received payment by May twenty second, the board will turn it.
Will be, will be forced to turn this over to our attorney, yes?
Yeah.
All right.
And I will accept all your suggestions, your friendly amendments, sir.
Well, I, I think then everyone will be clear on what it is.
I think that's a very good point. And we have a second? Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Um, we did that. Um, discussion on the village code regarding peddling and soliciting.
Do, do we want to, I mean, I, I started to say this before, but I think for, for, in my opinion, if we are going to move forward with this and we want to allow peddling, um, I know Julie Robbins reached out to us on this and would like to have the downtown business association involved in that discussion. If we are going to move forward and not allow peddling, but I think we should discuss the parameters of that and maybe we don't need as much input, because I think the, the main issue is if we're going to allow it, how, where, who, what? It's all of the questions, they, you know, the idea that they would have the overhead costs versus the existing businesses that are, you know,
They would be in competition.
Um, and how would we prevent the idea that there would be this large scale competition? Um, and if we want to allow it, I know, you know, Brian and I in a separate conversation talked about the idea of private property versus public property and there's, you know, there's currently like the hot dog cart at Ward Street Market is on private property and they're allowed to do, you know, you know, they don't need.
We don't regulate that.
Well, did, did they apply for a permit?
They did last year.
They did last year.
They did last year. No one has applied for any permit for many years, but we're still several days away.
So, so they do apply for a permit and we grant the permit, but the issue is that they're allowed, is whether or not they're on private property. Is, so we have to grant a permit or?
We, any commerce in the street, we have to grant a permit. Um, the reason it's, uh, the, what I was informed is the reason it's allowed in the code is because it's on private property. And some, and occasionally something will come up, um, like art show, art shows in the summer on the blue, on the, um, blue, blueberry patch. Um, if they have a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Cohen that says that they're, that they're allowing that particular person to be on their lawn, um, we, we issue the permit because you're doing commerce in the street, but it's up to us, it's, it's private property, that's the.
So, so the issue is private property versus village streets and sidewalks and whether a person can have, okay?
Right, it's a, it's two, it's a twofold issue. It, well, actually, it's really more.
If we're in favor of private property, then. If we're in favor of private property, then we do not do anything with this, right?
Well, now we're talking about people who wanna have entire food trucks on private, private property and you have, as a board, have to decide whether or not that's going to be alright.
Yeah, but that's a peddler's permit.
I mean, this says, per honker or peddler, except as in, as herein expressly provided, any person, principal or agent who in any public street or highway or public place. Or by going from house to house or place of business, on foot or on or from any vehicle standing in a street or highway, sells or fitters, which is said, but basically. That part of it, in the definitions part of it, does not say anything about private property, only talks about public property.
And so, I'm, that's my question, I agree with you Ariana, and I'm not sure why we are requiring permits.
Oh wait, sorry, public place shall do privately owned lands which are generally open to public access.
But that's not.
Well, what's including sidewalks, parking lots of schools, banks, gasoline, service station, shopping centers. So, I mean, that's like parking lots, basically.
Well, the water shit market is open to public access.
But it's privately owned.
But it's privately owned, so you're saying private land that are open to public access, exactly, um, I think if there was.
All stores that.
It's just like the blueberry patch.
Like, like if the blueberry patch, for instance, put up gates and you had only one way to enter, then that becomes something that isn't generally open to to public access. That becomes something, you know, that is.
See, I'm not sure that our definition is clear. That's the problem, because it seems to me, all stores are open to the public, but not all stores are public property.
Well, this is lots though, this is like.
But it doesn't say public property, it says a public place. It's the, it's the idea.
That's the for peddler.
Well, no, no, but then, then on the second page.
Right.
It it defines public place and it's not public property, it's an area that is open to the public is the idea.
But that's what I'm saying, that definition needs to be very much tightened because a pub, when you say a public place, I think of. Owned by the public.
Right, sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
I mean, it's a lot, school lot.
Okay, I do not think of sidewalks in a privately owned property.
The place where the farmer's market is.
Yeah.
It's a private.
That's a private, now, does the farmer's market have to?
No, I don't know why they're not, that that that's another, that I'm a compounded reason why we bring this to you. To define what it is the board, how, what and how the board wants to deal with it.
Right, see, my my thought on it is that if it's somebody's owned property that is outside, you know, it's not public lands. Clearly defined public lands, not as, not as this definition.
Right.
Then that person therefore has the right to do what they want to with it, now, now, I don't know.
With their property.
Where that stands along the lines of like a a build, like building or like how that falls in our code, like, let's say now you're erecting, you know, booths or something like that on a lot. Or or stands or whatever that is, I guess that's another issue, but I feel that we don't really have the right to regulate something like that, but I think that selling on the sidewalk shouldn't be. I think that you shouldn't be selling on the sidewalk, you shouldn't be selling on the street, I mean, maybe an ice cream truck, I don't really know how I feel about Mr. Softy. Again, I don't know if we should be banning Mr. Softy, but, you know, I don't.
Well, yeah, well, how does Mr. Softy come through our community, like, like the idea of an ice cream cart, I think competes with a number of local businesses.
Right. Right.
I mean, I I think that there is, you know, on Main Street alone, there's mu- more than one place that sells ice cream.
Sure. Sure.
Um, and so, would the ice cream cart be competing with those local businesses or would that ice cream cart be competing with Mr. Softy, who's Mr. Softy competing with if I didn't have a permit?
Right, does Mr. Softy have a permit?
Well, good to know a truck traveling through neighborhoods, does that require peddler's license?
Yes.
You'd think so.
I don't think it does, and it should by our law.
Well, I don't think it has one, but it according to our law would require, but to your answer your question about farmer's markets, it's under exemptions.
Huh.
C exempts, it's one fifty five ten C, exempt the transactions, nothing in this chapter shall be held to apply to, and then there's six different things, and number four, um. Is the peddling of meats, fish, fruits and similar produce by farmers. And persons who produce such commodities.
Do you use milk, big?
Provided they have otherwise complied with any licensing, health and safety requirements of any other company, governmental body or agency.
Well, good help, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, I don't know, I think that if someone wanted to start an artist's market somewhere, or if someone wanted to have like a small business incubator on their private property. I think that would be helpful to the community and I think would provide a good public service, I think someone who has an ice cream cart and is, you know, pulling it up and down the sidewalks of Main Street. Or people, cuz cuz number one, our sidewalk, well, number one, but our sidewalks are pretty congested, we have meters, you can't really walk two by two. Now, we're gonna have people bringing out tables and like blocking the sidewalks to meet the.
Well, well, that's the, that's the thing is that it's, you cannot, you cannot stand.
Right.
It says standing unless the license shall specifically provide otherwise, a licensee shall not stand or permit that the owner used by him to stand in one place by any public street. Public place or street for more than ten minutes.
Right, right.
And then what?
Then they gotta move a half a mile, right?
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
Yeah.
I mean, even if, I I mean, either way, I think standing or walking, I think if you're dragging an ice cream cart up and down Main Street. You you know, we're affecting our local businesses and that person doesn't have to pay rent, and I don't think that's necessarily fair, I mean, we wanna support the people who are willing to establish themselves in our community.
Is is the reason that this is being brought up, Katie, is because people want to pedal on the street? Well, then I don't think we need to revisit it.
No, I think we need to revisit it and make it.
And tighten it.
And and say that there is no peddling on sidewalks, not that you can walk up and down sidewalks.
Right.
Well.
I think we need to revise and tighten this.
Well, I think one, one of the things.
But I also think that this prevents people right now from peddling.
Well, it doesn't.
Well, well, it 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 doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, there are exempted transactions, um, and one of them is merchants having an established place of business within the village or their employees. So, it's the idea that if you're going to have a cart in the street, you have to have a.
The business.
Brick and mortar, um, to use Julie Robbins words, business that is already in place.
Right. Right. Right.
Um, and I, I mean, I think that that is a fair.
I do too.
I I I think that's fair because then, you know, if you, i- if, I I I don't, I think that this could add to our community.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and I think that there are places where the sidewalk is a little bit wider and maybe it wouldn't be a problem, or like the farmer's market in the, you know, in a parking lot. There there are areas where this could work, and I think especially like the hot dog cart and target product.
And I am opposed to someone at seven o'clock in the morning bringing their peddler's cart in. In competition with our merchants.
Right, well, I think, I think the idea, like, like with the P three, we didn't wanna allow the same kind of businesses that already exist because we wanted to make sure that.
Okay.
Our businesses that exist can continue to thrive, and unless it's going to be a business that somebody, you know, like we talked, discussed before, that they frequent the one closest to that.
Right.
So, I think the same would apply here where we want to continue to support our existing businesses that have put their time and effort and money into establishing a storefront to the community.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have enough of a sense?
I'm getting quite a bit of a sense and of course, I would be going back to Joe with this, so there there are certain questions I'd be bringing to the board, obviously, the hot dog stand down on Water Street Market is private property.
Okay, and then.
Um, if you feel that they don't need to be permitted because of that, that that's your purview, that it's your board, um, the flower cart person, we do, I and I could be wrong, please, it's very big and I have a really.
Sure.
Very busy, if I say this incorrectly, please forgive me, I don't know of another flower shop actually in the village, I know that we have flower shops in the town.
Right.
That that practically feed into the village, but I don't know whether the barriers do.
Bogas, we did, we did, and I want Water Street Market.
In in Water Street Market, Bogas. Well, no, we have one now, there.
That's what I said, we have one now.
Right, right, there used to be another one and now flowers at Water.
Now, who's that oil, there also was one where the oil.
Across from the bakery.
Uh, across from the bakery.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and and there used to be a different one in Water Street Market and now we have Bogas, which has things, there have been a few, there was as well, but.
Right, the oil one moved up. So.
I don't know when we come, when that person comes in in a couple of days for their, for their permit, is it their will of the board that they they be granted that permit or? That's, those are, those are the actual.
Right.
Those are the questions I need now, while I talk to Joe about later, what 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 should I bring back to you?
Right.
Okay, what I'd like to suggest if we all agree is that you summarize for Joe the things we said this evening, ask him. To make a draft proposal incorporating those, to please come to the meeting next week. And please invite the Downtown Business Association and any other interested parties that people might know about to come and talk about this with us. And that way, we can get, and and we should come with our ideas if we think of anything else, okay, and maybe put this.
Do do we wanna give it two weeks so that everybody has time to have notice of the meeting?
Sure, I mean, do it two weeks from tonight, that's fine.
Yeah, May twenty second, just so anybody, any members of the DBA who wanna come may at least, they have more time.
Mm-hmm. And I know, I know you have some thoughts, and I have no objection if you wanna incorporate your thoughts into our thoughts.
Your summary.
Yes, she does, into our, your thoughts into ours when you send the memo to Joe.
That sounds great.
Is that fine with everybody, and we'll do it in two weeks?
And I, and I think, and I think we ought to invite the Chamber of Commerce also.
Sure.
Sure.
I mean, my, my only issue is, do we, do we have things that we one hundred percent agree upon?
I, I feel very strongly there should not be peddlers just peddling in the street without business associations connections.
Does everyone feel okay with that?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I I it's, it's my general feeling right now, but if we hear from the two business organizations, if they have some other ideas that, and I have a feeling they won't until we post them.
Right. They would like that, but.
If they have something to say, I think we should.
Sure. Well, I'm.
You know, I was also thinking, maybe Joe should come up with a draft before we meet with. The chamber, the DBA and whoever else, because they might change our opinions or add enough that.
Well, you could make a summary of our opinions.
He'll have a change in completely already. Yeah.
So, he sort of has an idea, we don't necessarily want the.
Maybe he shouldn't draft it, we could give him the summary, have him attend the meeting, that he can hear everyone's opinions and have them come our system.
Right, okay.
But there's probably only a few very specific items that are coming up now, and they ought to be on the list so that we can.
Well. Exactly.
Deal with those, so like this flower park.
I I'm go, I'm gonna need to know from the board that night for those two specific people, will we give them a temporary, cuz they will be then days away from being out of compliance and that's not their fault if we haven't.
Right.
Decide what we're gonna do if if you know.
Hot dog cart and the flower cart are.
The flower cart.
How long, what's it, what's a temporary permit look like, how, does that, how long does that last or?
We only have one day or one year, but I mean, it's up to, I believe there's a clause in the law that says you can. I I mean, you have to.
But I also think the flower cart hands permission from the private owner to be there.
The hot dog cart does, the pri- the flower cart is up and down Main Street.
I think they ever seen it at the corner.
There are.
I I don't know, I don't see her very often.
Okay.
The, there was something, I remember reading it, I don't know if I'd be able to find it right now.
That gives you a chance, you can do it on like a.
It it said, or portion thereof, I believe, was exactly the words, you know what I'm talking about, yeah.
Right. That's exactly. I know exactly what you're talking about, so if you wanna allow them an extra month for for pro rated fees until you decide what you want.
Yes, right. License fees and term, A, fees, the fee for each license issued, persons in this chapter shall be one hundred dollars per year or ten dollars per day, or a fraction thereof. So, we can say.
Right, we can pro rate it.
Yeah, say, you know, a one month permit to give us the opportunity to continue this dialogue and not put anybody out of business.
You wanna move that right now, Ariana?
I would like to make a motion to allow for the temporary permitting of already existing peddler's permits. Uh, or the renewal of already existing peddler's permits for a fraction thereof, um, being one month.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, I think that that covers.
I do too, that's very clear.
And and a month will be plenty of time, I think, the end of June will like allow us to know.
And we'll know what we're doing. If anybody thinks of something that they want added to the list.
Mm-hmm.
Please let Katie know so that we are prepared and can go right through this, cuz she's been waiting for us.
I I just wanna do the right part, think about the village, that these are halls and.
Right. Yeah, and I think Ariana has given you a solution for the, for the moment.
Okay.
Let's see.
All right.
We've done peddling, so, do you have anything else to?
I mean, I don't, and I'm assuming since we didn't get anything, nobody, nobody, so that's that, um, in terms of sidewalks near Mulberry, um, I'm, I'm in a discussion with, uh, Rich Ruth, I called him today.
Okay, alright, so. Okay.
And I will, I already, I spoke with George Seafrey about it, um, and I made, I I basically just made him aware, um, he had not heard anything.
Really?
Um, yes, which I, I I mean, I I know that the residents reached out to probably just his like business office, so I guess the word just hadn't gone further up. But, um, I spoke with him, he obviously loves the idea, um, he did not make any offer to pay for any portion of it, um, and I. I guess we could pitch that to him when we have a price, maybe, um.
Do you wanna, you wanna make a motion that we should get price quotes so that when.
That's the conversation I'm having with Rich Ruth, they, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, um, but we can make, we can make a motion, you know what, let's do that because I think.
Okay. Okay, but you need.
That will make it official and then there's no question of whether or not I'm, you know, overstepping bounds.
I do too, okay.
It has something to do with, uh, we're.
This is the crosswalk.
With the procurement policy and all that.
Um.
Oh, I don't think she'll be over that.
No, no, and I don't think so because we have, there are engineers and it's really just them telling us.
Making an estimate.
Yeah, making an estimate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're not, we're not saying necessarily who will do any of this, yeah, um, yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion to, um.
We didn't say who up to bid.
Obtain an estimate of cost for the installation of, um, both curb cuts slash ramps. Because it might, because of the layout of it, it might be a ramp.
And creation of a cost.
And creation of a crosswalk, um, at the Mulberry, entrance of Mulberry Square Apartments on Henry W. DuBois, DuBois, yeah.
And and the estimate from our engineer?
Oh, the estimate being from, um, our engineer, uh, Brinear and Larry, Rich Ruth from the.
Rich Ruth. Is there a second? All second. Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, item number ten, we have a request from.
Wait, wait.
Just to make sure that I'm very clear, um, I got the motion, that's not a problem, I can, may I assume that we're not gonna put the snowball back on to any other agenda?
Pardon?
Unless something comes in for the RFP, I'd say let it go.
Okay, um, alright, thank you, just so I can.
Yeah.
Yes, no, thank you for clarifying.
Speaking of sidewalks and streets, have we heard anything from DOT on the removal of the meters? And on the removal of the parking spaces as requested by trustee Candace?
They requested a second map and my understanding is that superintendent Turwilliver said that he would happily even go and show them where we want and things removed.
Well, their problem is they don't wanna physically father to come.
I didn't say that.
Um, I think that we should ask them to make a decision. Within a reasonable time.
Mm-hmm, you wanna give them a month?
Yes.
I think that's fair.
Yes?
Let's do it.
Do we need a motion? I don't think, do we? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I I'll make a motion to, uh, request that the DOT give us their official decision, um.
Yeah, alright. Regarding?
Regarding the removal of parking meters and parking spaces, um, by.
As you requested two months ago.
Which was requested two months ago, um, by Ju- is, would it be June eighth?
Is it the same? That's about a month, mm-hmm.
Well, well, it's exactly a month from today, but is it, is that the day of the meeting, in fact?
No, our first meeting's the twelve.
The twelve, okay.
So, that would be put it on the agenda.
That's a Saturday, so that, why don't we do June seventh, with the Friday of the.
We don't need that as an agenda item, that we just need the approval, we've already.
Oh, what, I I know, I was just, I don't know.
Okay.
You're you're asking the DOT to do something by a certain date?
I was making a. I was making a joke.
Oh, right.
So, um, second to the motion?
What's, tell me what the motion is.
Um, that, trustee Vasco has requested that the DOT, um, offer us, uh, uh, offer us a visit, uh, excuse me, official decision regarding removal of parking spaces that was requested two months ago. And we would request the date to, to be responded to by June seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Now that you know what the motion is, would you like to second?
Not particularly, because I don't, I don't think we could tell the DOT.
I'll second it.
We can ask them.
Yeah, I'd be a little more, a little more difference if I was saying.
Um. Any more discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a request from the VFW to allow the veterans to distribute poppies at the intersections of two ninety-nine, thirty-two and two oh eight. Um, I would ask the board approve the request pending police approval. Because this is something that the police clearly have to approve. When you are standing in the middle of the street collecting money.
Isn't this really, these are in state highways, right?
Yep.
So it doesn't, the state have to.
They're still.
Grant you that, which, which I don't think they will, but if you wanna make it pending that, you'd have to make it pending the police approval and approval of the however sideways it is, I would think.
No.
So, I, I think, I think how, instead of approval.
When the library talked about doing this, the only people we had to see were the police and the police said no.
Why don't we, why don't we say pending a recommendation from the police regarding safety?
But we don't want to recommend, we want to appro, we want to allow them to do it if the police approve it.
Because they're. Okay.
Not coming back to us.
Alright.
And the police are the agents for the state government, whose highway it is, cuz that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cuz I, I can't imagine that they would ever approve that.
That's not our decision.
If you ask, I don't know, but I mean, I don't think, gotta give them false hopes that that'll happen.
Well, the, the letter is.
Maybe there's a better place to collect the money than in the middle of the street.
Yeah, they can.
I mean, there, there's nobody who's more in favor of them selling poppies than I, but I just, I, I think you're gonna get to something where probably it won't be approved and maybe there's an alternative where they can sell them or it's not a problem.
Well, I believe when this first came or no, it was another organization I recommended that they had to go to the police first.
This is the first time, is it, uh, this is the first time in my tenure I dealt with this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is the first time I think they've ever tried this.
Yes.
And I don't object to them doing it, it, but it's not, it's not our decision, it's the police's decision. So that's why I suggested that we approve it if the police approve it and allow it.
Okay.
Well, we don't have a second yet.
Then we should have, we should have, if that case, we should have some kind of writing in a file that they did fact approve it.
Uh, I could, I would have it physically.
Yeah, I'm sure, I, I mean, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Katie, might I ask the favor of you? Could you look back over the last six months' agendas and the minutes for items that we've missed?
Sure.
Okay, because we've had so many items and so long agendas.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't wanna make, um, I don't want us to miss, be remiss on approving something we put off or.
Yeah, I've taken it as, um.
Yeah, forgot about that.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Um, board procedures?
Hmm?
Board procedures?
Board procedures, I would like to ask Stuart as his final gift, what?
I, I have, I actually, not, not to, um, preempt you here, but I've got.
Good.
I've got the, uh, the language, um.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, Joe and I have just, had discussed this a while back. Um, and, and I believe what we were talking about is the setting of the agenda, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we, i- if we have trouble with anybody understanding our adopted rules and procedure, um, we can make them more clear by modifying them to state the following. Any agenda item submitted by noon on the Thursday prior to the scheduled meeting by any board member, whether it be the mayor or any trustee, must be placed on the agenda, carry it again.
I love it.
I think it's fine.
Aye.
Can you, would you be so.
And you are amended, what, are, is that an add-on or an amendment, or are you?
I can, I understand. That is an amendment to the part of our agenda that's entitled, uh, the part of the procedure that's entitled agendas, um, where it says the mayor or any trustee may have an item placed on the agenda.
Okay, so you are replacing that statement with what you just read?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was a, it was a sentence after that, that, uh, the attorney called to our attention that kind of didn't fit in with the prior statement and made it ambiguous, so has he dealt with that, speaking with you?
There, well, well, here, I'll, I can read you what it says here. The first item is the agenda of every meeting of the board shall be prepared by the clerk at the direction of the mayor or the deputy mayor if the mayor is not available. That is another thing that if we, if we so choose, is part of, I think, the ambiguity of our procedures.
I would suggest since we just made me think of something for the presiding officer, if we don't have a deputy mayor.
Well, I think what's important is that any item that comes in.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, any item that comes in is put in, I think we should just leave it to the clerk. I don't think it should be at the approval or whatever the case may be, I think that all items are put on when, when the clerk feels, when the clerk's deadline is, she's, he or she says, hey, it's set, I'm sending it out, and then it comes to us.
The agenda of every meeting of the board shall be prepared by the clerk, period?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think it clears the ambiguity and ambiguity.
It does, that does pick your ambiguity. Very, well, Ariana, thank you. Sorry, Stuart, you got robbed of your last.
No.
I didn't think you'd be upset.
Chuck this in.
Would you like the pleasure of moving her amendment?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? On the motion, all in favor or?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Um, Ariana, you want to talk about Memorial Day parade?
Um, I do, um, I noticed, uh, that Katie, um, sent an email to Mr. Maroncheck um, with the parade application and all of that stuff. And I just, and I know that in light of our conversations, um, at our parade club meetings.
I love that title.
I'm, I, for those of you who don't know, I call it a club because Mr. Logan gave us a hard time about calling it a committee, so, um.
She made.
As opposed to working group, I like the idea of parade club. But, um, so we, we have been talking about the Memorial Day Parade and the Halloween Parade being community sponsored, uh, parades, not events.
And I don't.
Uh, I think.
Um, so that's, that's the only thing, I just thought it might be prudent to bring it up here and maybe they don't have to fill out all of that.
A- actually, I went back to a resolution in two thousand seven passed by the board in, um, appreciation of the efforts made by the veterans. They don't have to fill out a, a, an application, but I was unaware of that at the original time, I did send a second letter to Mr. Maroncheck.
Oh, okay.
Apologizing for the inconvenience, luckily they hadn't sent one to us. I expressed that there is a resolution and, and just thank you for this.
Favor, would you send that resolution to the parade club? And we will catch it, your proposals, okay.
Wonderful, awesome.
Do you wanna, do you wanna pass one for the Halloween Parade at some point so that they don't, that I don't go along with that?
I don't know, is there a resolution there somewhere?
You know, I, I think that we might, there might have been something, we might have even done it, or either we did it or we referenced it.
Referred, that's what I put.
Because I remember it at some point.
Yeah.
But I think, I think you don't have to worry about it right now since we're gonna have a recommendation, um.
No, no, no. By that time, we, logic being done, yeah.
forthcoming in a very near future, yeah. Uh, I, I just wanted to make sure we brought that up tonight because I didn't want them to go through a hassle unnecessary, but we've already taken care of it, so wonderful.
I know, I, I sent an apology note and expressed how much we appreciate that.
Yeah, we did, we did pass as part of our immediate plans
Cool, then, I. I know.
For parking, the long-term parking lot, but I just wanted to inform the board to make sure it was okay that Ariana and I are gonna set a date with the Lou to talk about it and get it going.
Wait, what is this?
Our long-term parking lot in the back.
Oh, oh, yes.
I just want people to know that we're gonna get going on that. Is there anything else to come before the board? Uh, I know we need a short executive session. Okay, may I have a motion for executive session?
So moved.
There will be no action.
For, for what purpose?
For the.
For the, I announced that earlier, when I announced we're gonna have it, for the.
That's alright, what's it?
Well, I think Katie got it, but for the discussion of the, of the employment record of a particular individual.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, Kate, we're not gonna take any action.
Aye.
So if you would like to pack your bags, one of us will get to you when we come out. Cuz we don't need the camera anymore.
Maybe, maybe I should have done this a moment before you made this motion, but, alright, so, so.
You gotta, you gotta.
Yeah. All in favor?
Uh.
I, um, the, the only thing about the, the procedures is that
Opposed.
we, we are staying now twice to be, items to be submitted by noon with the third day saying items for the agenda to include backup data where necessary must be given to the clerk by noon, the Thursday before the meeting schedule. Do we just wanna include, say, to include backup data where necessary in what we're adding?
I don't think we should have backup data required at all.
Alright.
Because I think we are all responsible and if we're making a recommendation that requires backup data.
We will include that.
We will supply it.
Got it.
If an aborted meeting, someone wants something on or has something on the agenda and we feel that there should be backup data, we can ask for it for the next meeting.
Wow, I'm having deja vu, I'm having deja vu.
You do?
Cuz we've said this thing.
Okay, does everybody agree to this?
Um, yes.
I'm sending this too, okay.
I, I may make one tiny thought for the board to consider.
What?
Um, the way that, that this is currently set up and certainly it's your will, um, it makes it so that somebody like Nancy and I can't give you something on the agenda like the, the printer because we have to have a, a trustee to sponsor it.
Right.
Oh, you think that we, I, I disagree with that.
See, I, I think, and I mean, and this is part of the reason why I felt, why I felt the way I did this when I first came in
Okay.
this afternoon, because I feel that as elected representatives, that is our duty to do. So if, if there's an item that you or Nancy or whoever wants on the agenda, pass it over to one of us or any member of the board and say, would it be acceptable to add this to the agenda? And then one of us says, sure, it sounds great, and then it, and then it's settled on the agenda.
It does save you from getting into any.
Right, and then, and, yeah.
Thing, okay, and just pick up the phone and call somebody and say, will you be my sponsor?
Whatever, yeah, like, you know, an email or whatever the case may be, and I'm sure, you know, someone will be willing to.
Zen, okay.
Absolutely, I just want a clarity for when this comes up, 'cause as I said, when we came down to this, the copier, I have no invest, I have no, no personal investment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I am now requesting it be on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, neither.
Okay. Um, anything else? Are, are we clear on the mistake that Ariana found?
Yeah.
That we need to clarify?
Yeah.
Do we need an action on, on the board procedures that you, the backup of data and all that?
Oh, oh, I just, I, I just sent that stuff over.
Okay.
But I mean, does it have, if you made a motion to change it, and you have another change, it should be a motion to, like that.
Right. Right. Yes, I agree, alright.
I'm withdrawing my motion for executive session in order to allow the additional change. Ariana, do you have it?
Um.
Backup to agenda up.
To, uh, re, I make a motion to remove, um, the third point of the, um, agendas,
You remove it.
which is items to the agenda to include backup data where necessary must be given to the clerk by noon on the Thursday before the scheduled meeting.
That's being removed.
Yes, and I just realized that I didn't actually think that was in the legislation.
And you found something else that you had suggested, I thought, as part of that.
You did that part of the other one, I think.
Yeah.
She already did that second part.
Yeah, but, but did we do that as a part of the motion?
I think so, that was the one about the ambiguity part.
Alright. Yeah, the ambiguity part. Alright, are we all?
You don't have a second yet.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now are we ready? Anybody have anything else to bring before the board? Going once, twice, so, executive session, please, the motion.
I make a motion to go into executive, uh, session.
Sessions for the reasons stated, yeah, second?
Yep.
Thank you all for enduring.
Alright, aye, aye, say aye, Sally?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.